City Council meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlet.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Haly.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Magaki.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
And my S D is absent and excused.
Thank you, Holly. Next item of business would be Communications and Presentations. There is a White Keen Awareness Day proclamation in your packet. Does any council members have any communications? All sorts of them. We'll just go down the line. Go ahead, Ben.
So last week I brought to Community Affairs Council Policy the idea of a resolution honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a growing movement of state and local governments honoring Indigenous heritage on the second Monday of October, which historically has been Columbus Day. In the meeting, we agreed to act on this, but we don't have time to bring a properly respectful resolution by next Monday, which is the second Monday. So I'd like to say a couple of words. It's hard to understate the historic contempt shown to Native populations by the federal government, the military, other colonizing forces. But I'm glad to say Governor Evers announced an executive order today making that declaration statewide. I think we still want to have a resolution soon that is specific about the local history of the Ho-Chunk land ceded by Treaty of 1832 where Stoughton was later built. So just wanted to say we're thinking about it even if it's not coming out before this second week in October.
Thank you, Alder Person, Haly. And who is next? Alder Person, Bartlet.
I want to recognize on Saturday, we held the -- the Tree Commission held the first public lumber sale from trees that were milled and turned into lumber from city trees that had to be cut down over the last few years. I wanted to thank the forester, John Kepner, and Vicki Riddell from Public Works. They did a great job, and Public Works helped out moving all that lumber. And for the Tree Commission to volunteer their Saturday to come in and move lumber and sell that. They sold a little under $1,500 worth of lumber, so that goes back into the Tree Forest Program. Looking to do that as an annual program, hopefully, and sell every year a little bit of lumber that we can recover from trees that have to be cut down in the city. Just appreciate all the work from Public Works and Tree Commission that did that.
Thank you. Anybody else on that side? Alder Person, Caravelo.
And thank you, sir. I would just like to thank everyone that showed up to the Downtown Revitalization -- excuse me. Downtown Revitalization Subcommittee of the RDA's open house that was last Tuesday. I think at least 60 people showed up from what I could count. And I want to thank everybody for filling out the survey for that group as well. I believe we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,100 responses, so our work continues.
Thank you. Anybody else on that side? I'll switch over to this side. Anybody have any communications over here? All right, seeing none, we'll go into the agenda. The first item on the agenda would be public comment period. It must be budget time because there's a number of people signed up to speak tonight. And we'll start with Bob Diebel. And we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less if possible. Holly is our timer. We have some flashcards to help you stay on task here, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Diebel. I live on 316 Grant Street. I'm here to speak about the sidewalk issue, which you'll be deciding on particularly Grant Street and McKinley. I'm very pro-sidewalk. I think the city policy that when you go around to reconstruct streets and consider putting in sidewalks where appropriate is a very good policy. I think sidewalks are very important. Our neighborhood has -- it is a quiet neighborhood in terms of comparison to other neighborhoods, but we do have a lot of middle school kids coming up the pedestrian walkway. We have a lot of people that come through our neighborhood to go down through Beyond Park and get on the trail system. And we also have a lot of, of course, people in the neighborhood going from one house to another. And it's a very safe place for children to walk and even play on. So I'm very pro-sidewalk. I think it's a good idea. That being said, I think that in an old neighborhood, there are special cases where it's not appropriate to go in and put sidewalks on both sides of the street. I think if you look at our neighborhood, you'll find some cases where it's probably not appropriate to put a sidewalk because of garages being too close to the street and some other considerations. But I do think a sidewalk would be appropriate on Grant Street to connect the existing sidewalk down to Taft. And on McKinley, a connection up to Page. Those are the essential links that we do not have right now. So I would urge you to stay with the policy, but have some special consideration for some areas where it may not be appropriate in an old neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have, is it Jan? Joanne?
Joanne.
Joanne, sorry. Can't read my own handwriting, much less anybody else's. If you want to just give us your full name and address, that'd be great.
Sure. My name is Joanne Thornton, and I live at 404 Grant Street. In 1999, my husband and I were planning to leave Stoughton and our home on Van Buren Street and move to Madison. That plan changed when I found my current home in Stoughton because I fell in love with the neighborhood. The Prospect McKinley Grand Street neighborhood is a quiet, beautiful, peaceful area filled with green lawns, overflowing flowerbeds, and enormous trees. It is essentially an old, large cul-de-sac, unable to change fundamentally over the decades for two reasons. There is no place for additional building, and there is no through traffic. Basically, if you drive through our neighborhood, you're not going to get anywhere in Stoughton except in our neighborhood. The point I'm trying to make is that the current neighborhood is fundamentally the same one I moved into 20 years ago. The only real changes are new faces and older trees. It is essentially the same place my husband and I raised our children, our two children, who, yes, walked home from grade and middle school every day. There were many things I worried about as a mother of two, but having them walk to and from school in my neighborhood was never one of them. As a parent, the traffic was more concerning in our previous Stoughton neighborhood, and that one had sidewalks. So the question is, 20 years in, no fundamental change, and suddenly we need sidewalks. The neighborhood has thrived without them comfortably and happily for 60-plus years now. Suddenly, there is a need to invest Stoughton's limited financial resources in impervious concrete in our know-through neighborhood. Telling me that's the policy is not good enough. You've been elected and charged with the task of examining our community's needs versus its resources and making investments that are wise and necessary, and not because that's the policy. If you need to rely on a policy, please create one that does not force the city to make poor investment choices with precious city funds. Thank you.
Thank you. And next would be Steve.
Hello, I'm Steve Royko. I live on 148 East Prospect Street. And I'm also speaking up in opposition to any plan that would involve adding sidewalks to our neighborhood. The raising of this possibility, which I just became aware of in the last few days, has caused me to take a closer look at our neighborhood and reflect on what makes it an enjoyable place to live. All of these factors that I can identify would be negatively impacted by the addition of sidewalks without any discernible benefit or upside that I can see. One of them is pride of ownership and expression. Almost without exception, our neighbors show a pride of ownership in how they maintain and enhance their properties. One of the nicest ways in which this is manifested is how they landscape their properties. A walk through our neighborhood would reveal beautifully and uniquely landscaped yards, often with the residents hard at work maintaining them. Much of this work would be negatively -- would be destroyed or negatively impacted by the addition of sidewalks. The neighborhood's quiet and safe, as one of my neighbors said earlier, because it's a dead end, and I think also because of the lack of sidewalks. We have very limited traffic, making it safer for our children and pets. There are unique, interesting designs and non-traditional layouts. It is -- it's not a neighborhood that would be designed or developed like it is now, which I see as a positive. It is anything but one-size-fits-all. It's very green. It's filled with very old, beautiful trees, and, as I mentioned, lush, beautiful landscaping. There are many 100-year-old trees that would be destroyed or damaged were this policy to be enacted. This also would impact the kind of unique ecosystem we have there being just across from the river, including the animals that use those trees, such as we've had a great horned owl in the neighborhood lately. I not only asked the council to consider rejecting the addition of sidewalks to our neighborhood, but also to revisit the one-size-fits-all policy so that the governing bodies can use sound judgment in these cases. Sound judgment in this instance is to reject sidewalks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next we have Kay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kay Rashka. I live at 325 North Page Street, so that's up at the corner of North Page and McKinley Street. So again, like some of the folks who've spoken tonight, one of the neighborhoods that will be targeted for the addition of sidewalks where none have existed. I do oppose the proposed CIP plan as written. I have also been told that the sidewalk ordinance was written in 1997. I did a little research, and I -- back in 1990, between 1990 and 97, Stoughton added a headcount of 2,500 people. So it's a 30% growth. So that ordinance was really written to support that growth. Where are we at today with growth? Single digits. And again, it's the one-size approach for sidewalk infrastructure just does not apply to our historic neighborhoods. I don't believe that, as many of the folks have said earlier and look at that follow me, this proposal is not environmentally or fiscally sound. I would hope that you would all consider preserving the natural aspect of our historic neighborhoods, which includes quite a few centuries-old trees. Can't we be a little forward-thinking here? Why do we need sidewalks throughout the city of Stoughton? If you go over to Hole Avenue, I believe that's the town of Stoughton there, there are no sidewalks. I didn't know that until earlier today. One of my neighbors or coworkers lives near there. Brett knows, Travis, and he explained to me that that's the town of Stoughton, that there will never be sidewalks most likely there. So I don't understand why what is good for the town of Stoughton can't be good for the city of Stoughton. In my case, if I can be very selfish, I live on a -- at the corner of North Page and McKinley. My side slope has a very extreme -- my side lot has a very extreme slope. And that's been in place for the 90-plus years since McKinley was excavated. So why wasn't that issue dealt with 90 years ago? And now why is it my problem if this group decides that I need to pay for retaining one? I hope there's a consideration to revise the CIP plan and the current sidewalk ordinance because one size does not fit all. Thanks.
Thank you. And next would be Lori.
Good evening. My name is Lori Oler. I live at 123 East Taft Street. I speak to express my concern regarding the plan to retrofit sidewalks in the Sarah Turner neighborhood. I recently bought my home slightly less than one year ago in this neighborhood for precisely what this neighborhood offers to my 12-year-old daughter and me. A quiet, close-knit neighborhood, feel with historic charm, mature trees, stunning, well-kept gardens, and ample wildlife and birds. The one-size-fits-all policy disregards all that this very special neighborhood has to offer its residents and much of what I value about my property, my neighbors, and our neighborhood would ultimately be destroyed. My home sits on Taft Street, and my daughter confidently walks to River Bluff Middle School using the quiet streets on her route. She finds her walk peaceful and rarely trafficked with cars. As a dog walker and runner, I easily pass through the streets of my quiet residential area daily, often without any sign of cars traveling the roads. Taft Street ends on a dead end, so most of the very light traffic that the road sees is only by the residents of the road. Placing a sidewalk here is nonsensical. Additionally, the neighborhood is blessed to hold many 100-plus-year-old oaks and other established hardwood trees that would need to be removed to make way for concrete slabs, permanently scarring the neighborhood, damaging and disrupting bird habitats and the beautiful gardens that make the neighborhood beyond special and rare. Now is the time for logic, not the blind rubber stamping of an outdated policy. I implore you to hold on to the gem of Stoughton, save our trees, our precious wildlife, and our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the council this evening? Come on up, and if you could just give us your name and address for the recognition.
Yes, sir. My name is Al Olson, and my wife Rebecca Romine, and I live at 124 West Prospect on the corner of Sherman. And I can only say that I am just now, within the last few days, getting up to speed on what it is that seems to be going on based on a 1997 picture policy. And so I don't really have any prepared remarks, other than my thinking and outlook echoes just about everything we've heard since we walked in a few minutes ago. We think it would be a real tragedy to, if I can use the term, one-size-fits-all, applied to this neighborhood, which for my entire life has never had anything like that in it before. You know, we live on the corner of Prospect and Sherman. Sherman Street at that point is a one-block run. Nobody has a front door that they use on that street, and one official front door is never used. Everything else is, it's just like an alley more than anything. You know, to lay some sidewalks down there would just really change the whole nature of that little -- that block. And so I just have to say I would spend a little more time myself studying the situation and understand that what was applicable in 1997 or what applies to a subdivision that's being developed in a cornfield today doesn't apply to a neighborhood that's been around for well over 100 years. And that you would take into consideration that there are certain parts of this community, and they differ widely. Subdivision is one thing; older neighborhoods are another, and should be treated with a certain amount of sensitivity if you're going to lay down sidewalks. I know in other cities, large cities, where parks are being developed and sidewalks are necessary in that respect, material is being used that's very porous. It's a finely ground-up automobile or truck tire, and it's compressed material, and it's used as a walk. It's -- every bit as solid as a concrete pavement, but the water runs through it. And that's another problem that will happen in our area because when that water is hitting the sidewalk, it's not sinking into the ground anymore. And I'm going to have to get a bigger sump pump because we got, in the last several years, we've had a lot more water coming down on us on that hill than we've ever had. And we've had flooding in the basement for the first time. And so I think paving anything in that area is going to be a challenge for those of us who live there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up. You know the routine.
I'm Pam Taliffson, and I live on the corner of McKinley and Sherman. And I've already emailed all of you, so I won't repeat that. But I feel very strongly that we don't need the sidewalk, that it would be more trouble for shoveling, for doing all sorts of things, for ruining our yards. And I really feel strongly that we shouldn't have it. I love living in a historical district, and I hope to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. And did we miss anybody? And thank you all for the very thoughtful and respectful comments. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda. And the consent agenda has three items in it. There's council minutes, there's operator licenses, and there's items from Stoughton Utilities. We'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve.
Second. Motion by Boersma and a second by -- who had the second? Or was it Reeves?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Oh, okay. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? That carries. I'd like to move item nine up. Is that okay with everybody? Don't go anywhere.
Oh, no, I'm not going anywhere.
Since there's people here that would like to hear the discussion on item nine, which is Resolution 156, 2019, and that comes from our CIP Committee. And Alder Person Jensen is the vice chair, and he's going to introduce the CIP.
Your Honor, Resolution 156, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the city of Stoughton five-year, 2020 to 2024 capital improvement plan. And I would approve it.
Your Honor, if I may, as a question, I'm going to move to amend at least part of this. Do I need to do that this time, or can I wait?
We need a second first, and then we'll begin.
Second.
A second by Alder Person, Haly. Do you have something, Attorney Dragony?
I just want to make sure. So was the motion and the second was on an amendment, or it's still on?
Oh, the motion and the second is on the --
The approval?
On the approval. And then we can either walk through this, or we can start discussion. What is the wishes?
I would like to move to amend it.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
Sure.
All right. What I'm requesting, I'm requesting that we move to amend the CIP budget as currently stated. I'm requesting that we poll for any funding for the planned sidewalks on Grant, on Sherman, and on Prospect. And I'm looking for a second on that. I'd be happy to address it unless somebody else would like to first.
And a second by Boersma. I just want to make sure that Holly got everything on that. Did you get all that? Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. And then would you like to begin the discussion, Alder Person, Riley?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. You know, first I want to say I had requested to address this issue to the Public Works Committee. That request was denied. Now, I'm going to talk about the policy in general and some other things here. And I'm going to say this. Dogged.
Let's just make sure that you can talk a little bit about the policy, but we're not here to change the policy.
I understand that, actually.
So we want to really stay focused.
I'm focused, Mayor, believe me. I am so focused.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Right, go for it.
I am going to say this. You know, dogged adherence to a policy regardless of the context in which it is used, the application of that policy, budgetary concerns, environmental consequences, and the wishes of our constituents is not, in my opinion, governance. It is an abrogation of our responsibility to govern. And I believe that's what we're doing here. With respect to my motion and how it applies to this neighborhood, much of this is going to mirror what you heard from a number of our constituents here. This is one of the oldest neighborhoods in Stoughton. It has survived and thrived without sidewalks for 80 years or more. It is a very unique and quiet neighborhood, featuring mature trees, full lawns, garden beds, and landscaping. What this budget currently seeks to do is an assault on the very unique nature of this neighborhood and frankly, of the constituents who live there. There is virtually no vehicular traffic beyond the actual residents who live there in this entire area. It is not a pathway or thoroughfare to any other destination. It is the destination for these people. I have resided in this neighborhood for over 20 years. Not once in this 20-plus years have I witnessed nor am I aware of any vehicular pedestrian incidents ever. People stroll the streets. They stroll the streets with their dogs, sometimes with their children. They jog through the streets. They walk together through the streets, showing no fear of any vehicular incidents, showing no fear that at any moment they might get hit by a car. They love it because of the nature of this neighborhood. Frankly, these sidewalks would be an indelible scar on what makes this a special neighborhood. There are budgetary concerns I wish to address, too, with respect to these particular sidewalks we're talking about. The current CIP calls for $25,390 to be dedicated to Prospect sidewalk work. That's 12-695-CITY, 12-695-HOMEOWNERS. Grant Street, $22,114. That's $11,057-CITY, $11,057-HOMEOWNERS. Sherman, $14,100. $7,050-CITY, $7,050-assessed-to-residents. Total CITY, $30,802. Total RESIDENTS, $30,802. A couple of weeks ago, The Hub printed an article, and there's our mayor, who we're all proud of, right on that article. And it's talking about that we have a ridiculously tight budget, because we do have a ridiculously tight budget year after year. And we need to prioritize what we are going to be spending our money on. These funds, these SIP funds, as we all know, they're borrowed, all right? We are borrowing this money in order to do this. And every dollar we borrow is a dollar plus interest less that we have for other priorities in this city. Currently, 24 percent, 24 cents on each dollar that we spend is dedicated to retiring debt. That's where we are in that right now. You know, I sat through the committee of the whole in a budget discussion last week, and we had a number of department heads come and speak to us and request funding for certain positions they would like to see funded. Just go through a few of those. Human Resources was looking for an assistant. $8,482 per year. WSTO could use some camera work, like 12 bucks an hour for somebody. $2,201. Parks and Maintenance, we have a Parks and Rec director who's doing 10 jobs right now, and he's doing them pretty darn well. But he is overworked, and he needs help. He's looking for Park Maintenance, $67,742, looking for a full-time recreation assistant, $58,482. There's a request from the Fire Department for an increased fire technician to full-time. They're currently only 30 hours a week. That would cost us $14,562. I've got only two more left in this section. The library would like to have a circulation supervisor full-time. That would be another $19,211. We had the library director tell us last week that he has never seen a library that does not have that position funded full-time. We're unique in that respect. Also, an administrative assistant at the library, $2,012. But I strongly suspect honestly that few, if any, of these are going to be funded. These are all positions that would benefit all of our constituents. And yet, I suspect we don't have the money to fund one of them. Or if we do, one of them, perhaps. There are environmental concerns with respect to this proposal, too. And I did take the liberty of shooting some photographs. I'll put four on this side and four on the other side. But basically, what they are going to show you is the pathway for the sidewalk from the bottom of Grant to the top. You're going to see that there are two huge, beautiful, mature trees that are right in that pathway. Excuse me, no, that's not what I'm referring here. From Grant Street going straight up. There are two beautiful, huge, mature trees that are in that pathway. There are flowerbeds in that pathway. There is grass in that pathway. There is landscaping in that pathway. So these sidewalks will replace full, mature trees, flowerbeds, lawns, and landscaping with cement. Permeable CO2-consuming plant life, trees, and lawns with impermeable cement. There are members of this council who hold sincere concerns regarding climate change and regarding our environment. Plant life, lawns, trees, and soil fight climate change. Cement contributes to it. We nowadays have torrential downpours regularly. Flowerbeds, lawns, trees, plants, soil, they absorb that water. Cement repels it, and it washes it down to the storm drain at the bottom of the block there and then into our river. This 1997 policy as applied here is environmentally unsound at best. I also believe it is completely fiscally irresponsible. I am asking that I get your vote to remove these particular items and that we also, not, this is not what I'm asking for tonight, but I fully intend to try and address this policy going forward and seek some revisions of this 1997 policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to follow that? Alder Person. Alder Person Boersma?
There are, there are some other considerations. I live in that neighborhood as well. Beautiful neighborhood. Been there a long time. The, the neighbors are happy with the way that the neighborhood gets, gets along, and the fact that there's no, some sidewalks are not on both sides. I've been talking about that for a number of years, that I think that it's, it's a, it's just frankly, kind of a dumb policy made a long time ago, and we don't need it, we don't need it that way. I'm also looking at some of the structures that are, for instance, on, on Grant, that it would totally modify the ability for somebody to keep a garage. There's, there's one particular house that would, you'd destroy, you'd destroy a driveway and a garage. There, there are places in, in there that, on that street, that there are incredibly beautiful trees. And messing around with those trees, no matter how carefully you are, I, and if you try to go around them, or, or whatever, would just destroy those trees. I've, I've been the recipient of destroyed trees because of construction, and it's, it's a terrible thing to see a tree as old as a hundred years old just wasted. So I am fully in support of my colleagues, my city council partner to my left. I think he's absolutely right on, and as well as the rest of the, the people who spoke tonight. I, I think we have to look at the future with saying, the, one of the arguments is, well, if we make exceptions to one neighborhood, are we going to be requested to make exceptions to other neighborhoods? Well, frankly, if it's, if it's right to make an exception in this regard, it probably will be right in the future to make some exceptions on this, on this policy of sidewalks on both sides of the street. I think it's just an ill-fated, kind of awful thing to have, and, and it's tying our hands as a council, and I think it's just a pretty crazy idea. I'd like to see that modified. We've tried to change that, and we haven't been able to. But, but for as long as I'm council, I'm going to be pushing to change that, that policy that is totally outdated. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other elders? Alder Person Doom?
I have to take agreement with Sid and Tim. My wife and I walk that area quite often. It's a beautiful neighborhood. And we were just discussing, because I was reading an email to her that we got the other night from one of the neighborhood, about traffic. Every time we've walked that neighborhood, and it's quite often, I've never met anybody else walking there. I've never seen a car driving in that neighborhood. Those are beautiful trees and flower beds. And frankly, if they were my wife's flower beds, it'd be, she'd be in the same boat as all of you. And I see no reason to tear them trees down. It's a quiet neighborhood. Sidewalk on that one side where it is is plenty in my book. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Alder Person Healy?
Couple of questions. Could we clarify the, get some clarification on the policy as it stands, and on the area in the CIP document that would be affected? Is that the sidewalk project line item? No?
No.
First question first. Clarification on the policy. For the council members that aren't aware, there has been deviations from the policy that the council has endorsed. So there has been special exceptions that you've taken consideration of. For example, in the 2019 project, there was a deviation from the policy to not install sidewalks on the south side of Lowell Ave, Lowell Street, that entire stretch. Similarly, in the 2019 project, there was another consideration for whether sidewalks should be installed or not, and that was retained as required to be installed on the south side of Patterson. So sidewalks were installed on both sides there. I'm just explaining more recent projects. So there is, there is some opportunity, and has been in the past, to consider situations separately. The policy is a policy. The ordinances dictate requirements also related to new development and how those costs are allocated. The question related to the component of the CIP, that's a, that's harvested out of those particular street projects. So a street reconstruction for Grant, Sherman, and Prospect. And so the piece that he identified was the piece that was identified for sidewalk. It wasn't enumerated to that level of detail in your packet. I should ask for one point of clarification. That amount of dollars for sidewalk also handles replacement where there is existing sidewalk. So if that was depleted to zero on each of those street segments, as I understood the motion, that any defective sidewalk that's, that's there now would not be addressed as part of the, the street reconstruction project?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, the policy does not allow for any discretion. The policy is written as though this is what we do. This is what we should do. This is what, in essence, we must do. It was articulated in 1997. You cannot look in that policy and see, but we'll take, you know, we might do this here or that here. Now, maybe in practice, they have sometimes. But one, ultimately, this policy needs to be addressed and changed. That's one. But two, with respect to what we're doing tonight, if there's, if there needs to be some modest exception for reconditioning or re-whatever, fixing, repairing existing sidewalk, that's fine. I don't see that articulated in what I looked at. The numbers I gave you are just the numbers for these streets and sidewalks. So I, Rodney knows more about exactly the details of that than do I. I will concede that. But this, this, this policy as written does not provide any real discretion at all. It's one of the reasons I am coming here and saying, let's pull these out, and then let's work on the policy going forward. Thank you.
And I guess, for my part, I mean, the policy itself, many have tried and many have failed, including myself, to change the policy over the years. And as recently as, I think it was earlier this year, we actually reviewed the policy at one point at Public Works, and we really couldn't come up with an agreement of what a new policy should look like. And as staff, what we try to do is, the council makes a policy, and the staff implements it based on the policy. And the council has a purview to do basically whatever they want as it relates to that. So what we try to do is, when we do our CIP budget, we, we just follow the policy and incorporate the items that we would potentially do under the policy. Now, that's not to say that if you were to approve this budget as it is tonight, that automatically means everybody that's affected is going to get a sidewalk next year. That's really not where we're at in the process. What it does is it really just puts us in a position where if we're going to borrow the money to do the work, we have approval to do so. And we don't actually borrow the money, I believe, until after the first of the year. So there's other decision points that would be made between now and then, when we get to specifics. And what we try to do at this point is get the money reserved for the potential borrowing, and then we have to have the engineers come out and do the design work. And then, based on what they see and the input we get, those were, the specific decisions would be made, whether or not it's appropriate to make those exceptions. That's kind of how the process works, is I understand it. And I don't know Rodney or Jayman, if you have anything you want to add. But I think that's where we're at now. So whether you approve or disapprove of this tonight may or may not be the last kick at the can for this group. And in the meantime, really, the policy itself, I think, if you're going to address that, you do it after the budget process. So it's not being made on an emotional decision. And like I said, it's been tried, it seems like, once a year, ever since I've been around. So it's been going on ten years now. We still haven't been able to, to, to change it. So that's kind of my history of it, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, what is before us tonight is funding this. You're saying, go ahead, borrow sixty thousand, we borrow sixty thousand, and then we're going to have, over time, the residents pay their portion of it. But I think we're saying, yeah, you have authority to borrow sixty thousand dollars for the scar. I'm sorry. That's what it is in this neighborhood. And it is foolish. And it seems to me that we can look at this again, whatever you want to do, but it seems to me right now is our opportunity as a council to stand up and say, we are not going to fund this. We are not going to say, borrow sixty thousand dollars for sidewalks that you had a surprising number of people appear tonight, tell you they are not wanted, they are not needed, they are not appropriate. And we don't have that happen very often here. So there's obviously strong feelings about this, and frankly, I'm sorry, they're right. They are absolutely right. So I'm going to ask again, please, that people vote against this funding for these sidewalks in this instance. I will be more than happy to take on that, that sidewalk policy. I'll be more than happy to fight that fight and to articulate the language appropriately. But tonight, I'm here to try and defeat the funding for these sidewalks because they should not be funded. Thank you.
Alder Person Reeves?
I did take a walk around the neighborhood today, just so I could get a better handle on, you know, see it firsthand. And I realized I'd actually walked that neighborhood quite a few times. First time was by accident, because I just was out with my dog. It was beautiful. I just kept walking. And then I truly was like in a big circle. And I can attest that, and I went round and round and round and toured the neighborhood. But it is very quiet. And I, you know, I felt very comfortable, which is the reason I went back a number of times. And I would agree, I don't see the benefit to the city for the sidewalks. And, you know, I have, I've been on Public Works, and quite honestly, I was concerned about changing a policy because it might seem arbitrary. But one of the things that, that I'm, that I realized, especially today, is part of our job is to make judgment calls and good decisions. And so if that policy, I couldn't really come up with a good policy previously. I'm willing to take another stab at it. And again, we're not here to talk about that. But I do think that we need to be really getting out and taking a look before we make decisions about sidewalks and other things. That's what we always do with other, you know, decisions. And I think this is a good example, that if you're just looking at it on a map or on a piece of paper, I'm not sure that's necessarily the best way to, to make the decision. So I would agree that I would prefer to take out the funding for these sidewalks. Not any that need to be repaired, but new ones.
Okay. Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I've been on council for almost twelve years, and I've tried a couple of times to do this, to change the policy. And like Mayor Swallow, I've, have not been successful. I'd like to see a change, and I hope that I would give you all the backing you need to, to try and change that policy. The thing that, that I'm kind of struggling in right, with this right now is that what this, what this does, the CIP, is simply earmarking money for projects. That's all it's doing. It's just earmarking money for the projects. The projects themselves have not been finalized. That goes, that's part of the, the other process that Rodney would be going through, and that we would all have a vote on. And, and it's, it's at that time when we changed Lowell Street, we changed Patterson, we did some work on Franklin, not Franklin, on Vernon. Vernon Street, we did some work on that. So I mean, we, there, there is a pattern where we have made changes to, to the sidewalks and, and all of the other questions that were brought up. And I, I don't disagree with them. I, I, I know this neighborhood very well. Have many friends in that area when I was a kid, and we, well, anyways, that's a long story. I won't go down that road. So I, I agree with what you're saying, but I have a fear that what we're going to be doing is tying our hands as far as what we can do as far as the projects are concerned. I have no problem with taking the sidewalks out, but I don't want to do it right now. I want to do it as the projects come forward to the council.
All right. Alder Person Boersma, and then Riley. We'll see if we can wrap it up, unless there's some news.
Another, another issue, thank you, Your Honor. Another issue is that this is not a money issue completely. I mean, it's more, I would say if it was, if we look at it in terms of money versus aesthetics and, and the well-being of the community, the, the well-being of the community and aesthetics trumpet, that's, that's the top priority. But it does have an effect on our constituents. Put, to put sidewalk in, it costs a lot of money. Costs a lot of money for the city, and also costs a lot of money for, for a resident. And it's something that we have to consider very seriously. And we, we don't want our citizens to be hamstrung with policies that they, they believe are folly. And, and I frankly agree that the policy of sidewalks everywhere in this environment is folly. It's not just bad decisions. It's, it's, it's simply the wrong thing to do. And, and so I really support the, the fact that we take this out of the financial picture right now.
Okay. Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. And just briefly, and one, Councilperson Jensen, thank you. And you know I will accept your assistance, and I appreciate your remarks. What I just want to say here is this, is that I don't think there's any questions here about what's going on. I don't think there's any great mystery. I don't see why in the world, with the information we have and what was said to this council tonight by a number of citizens, doesn't make it clear what I think we should be doing here, which is to defund these now. Why earmark funds for these sidewalks when the majority of constituents, or I would assume the majority, they showed up, don't want it? When I have articulated, I think, pretty passionate and pretty powerful positions with respect to why we should not do it. So I am going to ask, please, that you consider this and that you vote to pull these sidewalks out of this CIP and vote that they not be funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I have a couple more. Alder Person Healy, and then Jensen.
So I also took a look through this neighborhood, and I agree that there, there are a lot of trees and landscaping, and it's, it's just not a neighborhood that was designed for sidewalks. At the same time, I'm sympathetic to people who have to get around in wheelchairs, who the street might not be a viable option for them. But I, I don't think that adding in sidewalks everywhere is the solution here. But I'm also concerned about what Rodney brought up about, this would also be defunding sidewalk maintenance for existing sidewalks. So I don't think I can vote for this amendment as, as stated.
Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, Rodney or, or Jayman, if we were to pull out the, what, forty thousand?
It's about sixty thousand. May I?
Sixty thousand, roughly.
I'm sorry, I'll wait till you're done. Forgive me.
Okay. No, no, that's, that's fine. Sixty thousand, you said then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just needed to confirm that.
No, sure.
Okay. If, if they pulled that sixty thousand out of the CIP, would that change the amount that we're going to be borrowing, or?
You would think it would.
So you'd be, you'd be adjusting it by that sixty thousand? So if, if it did turn up that we'd be short, that means the project would be, we would have to short the projects in certain areas in order to get the project done? I mean, you know, we'd have to balance it out one way or the other. Okay. And the project itself is, is not just sidewalks. We're reconstructing the, the streets. We're doing utilities. We're doing sewer, water, all the other things that are, are necessary. So again, I, I, I understand where, where Tim is coming from with this, and I, and I do not disagree with him. I agree with him that, that the sidewalks should be pulled in, in most cases on this, on this project. But I have a real problem with tying our hands as far as, as funding the project all the way to the end. And then, and as we look at it, each, each project comes forward to us, we can make the adjustments as needed. So I, I can't support it either.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. One, just for the sake of clarification, the sixty thousand and the individual sums I cited are only sidewalks. They're not for anything else here. The, the streets are going to be done, and they should be done. All of that's still going to happen. That sixty thousand is only the sidewalks, Councilperson. And I would accept a friendly amendment from Councilperson Healy if I can get his vote with respect to amending my motion to state with the exception of any funds specifically dedicated to existing sidewalk repair. That's fine with me. And I think that makes sense, and I think that addresses the concern that Mr. Sheil raised. But, so if you'd like to make that amendment, if not, I'll move to amend my own motion to that effect. I'd like to have your vote returned.
It's, are you gonna? Want to make it, or should we go? Continue? It's, are you gonna, you want to make it, or should we go continue? Go ahead.
I just want to, I just want to ask a question about that amendment that you suggested. Do we have that particular amount broken down, so we don't have that amount identified? There is no line item?
No, there are. There are three line items.
Is there a line item for the existing sidewalk that needs to be either repaired or removed?
There hasn't been.
Right. And that can be determined, I would think, without too much difficulty. We have really smart guys down here at the end of the table.
It's usually determined after the engineering work is done.
Mayor?
Sure. Go ahead. Alderperson Lagaki, and then Hirsch.
So that was my question. Jamin and Rodney, as you hear this and you hear the spirit by which we would not want to put sidewalks into that area, can you give any thoughts? What's the wisest way with what we have or what we don't have? Perhaps there's other line items. How best to organize this, to get this accomplished and still get the existing sidewalks updated and worked on as well?
I would suggest to you that you may not have to deal with the monetary aspect of it right now. And maybe Jamin can speak to this more than I can, but even if the motion is as stated, with maybe an exception to deal with repair, and the spirit is to not have sidewalks installed, that's the direction we'll proceed with the design, irrespective of the amount. So, you know, bids will be received likely before actually borrowing the money. So I think there's an opportunity to see what the actual costs are prior to that borrowing capacity. But it allows us to have direction if you're not going to consider sidewalks on either side of any streets here. That's how the design would proceed if that motion prevailed.
Does that answer your question?
Is this the right way to organize this, Jamin? Is there some ways we can accomplish it?
If the timing works, it's always a challenge with issuing debt. I just asked Rodney when we thought we might get this out to bid. He's guessing around February. We're going to start pushing back the debt issuances potentially a month, month and a half. I think historically, past finance directors wanted money in the bank by springtime. This city, obviously, will have funds available to cover the interim costs. So we're able to start pushing back the debt issuances to possibly May, mid-May, end of May. So if the bids are back and we have good numbers, we can certainly tweak the actual amount of money that we're going to borrow. So it all depends on the timing, when the bids come in.
Thank you.
I had Alderperson Hirsch, Jensen, and then Boersma.
This is a question. Rodney, I think one of the residents from this neighborhood talked about that there were some sidewalks that had started and on some streets that weren't finished, that they're just kind of sidewalks that go to nowhere. Is, I guess, I mean, I've walked this neighborhood too, but not recently with that in mind, you know, looking at sidewalk issues. I was there for other reasons. But is there, how many are there, and are they transecting through trees? I mean, I'm just trying to like, I mean, my pet peeves is have sidewalks that start and then they stop, and then there's nowhere to go. But also is what Alderperson Haley says, it's like, how do you, you know, please everybody, but also make sure that it's a neighborhood that's safe for people that have disabilities as well as, what are the things?
Without the illustration on the screen that we're attempting to get, the reference that I think you're referring to is on Grant Street from Prospect North. I believe it's two houses. There are sidewalks on one side of the street.
They just have two?
I believe it's.
Is this in the budget, by the way, to get this funded?
I don't deal with that.
It actually is.
It sure is.
There's a connector in the.
My toolbar showing is.
So, you know, there's a couple of other nuances to this area. There's some unique sidewalk sections that are directly above the back of the curb that likely would be considered for removal because of the placement of, I believe it's like a three-foot or two-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalk that should be contemplated because it would either have to be reinstalled differently or not replaced. And I think those are types of design questions we try to work through at that point. But the continuous sidewalk question, there was two references. One was referenced on Grant Street, and then there was another suggestion of sidewalks on McKinley page. But I can't graphically show you that on the screen.
You know, I would just add the difficulty with it right now is there are sidewalks that really don't connect. And it's just like a trail. When you have a trail that doesn't connect, it really doesn't maximize its purpose. And to me, we're talking about three roads right now, but we also have other ones that potentially would be part of the bigger picture that we have in the CIP for 2023. And I think we'd be better served if we took a holistic look at all of it at once instead of piecemealing and saying, we're going to do this or do that now, and then come back three years from now and do that on the rest. Because if we do that, we risk having more of the same, and that's a sidewalk on a half a block that stops. And would, at that point, I would argue that we should either extend it or take that half out because it's really serving no purpose anyway. So, you know, to your point, if we have a sidewalk that leads to nowhere, it doesn't do anybody really much good. And the other thing I would add is there is a park in the neighborhood as well. So I think we have to be a little bit conscious of that as well as, and we're going to be repurposing that park. Soon, Dan is working on getting a neighborhood group together to see what that park will look like in the future. So, you know, that's another asset that not only the neighborhood, but community, you know, could go to to use that park as well. So that was the only other point I wanted to make. I had Alderperson Jensen. Were you done, Regina, or go ahead?
No, but that's.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to follow up that, I mean, I hear what everybody's saying, and I guess, I mean, I, I'd really like to do, just, I was just going to suggest us pulling this back and really like taking a holistic look at this whole neighborhood and try and figure out what's best for not only the environment, but also the residents and the city. I mean, I don't, it's, and I know Rodney and Public Works has done a great job identifying what roads need to be done and the utilities. But I really think that we need to like have a good plan for this. I don't like the piecemeal that we're doing for a particular neighborhood like this. I mean, if it's one of the newer neighborhoods, it's something different because it's all like platted nice and square. But these are unique, and I do want to kind of take a broader look, but also make sure that we're also accommodating, you know, people with special needs as well.
So I had Alderperson Jensen, and then Boersma, and we'll get back to you then.
Thank you. Good sir.
All right, go ahead.
I could ask Holly, does the amendment state any specific amount of money?
The motion that was made, yes. The motion that was made was to amend the CIP plan to remove planned sidewalk construction on Grant, Sherman, and Prospect Streets.
Okay. So there's no specific amount of money that has been made?
There was not in the motion.
Okay. If Tim could withdraw his motion and then restate the motion to not be as specific, but to direct staff to work toward eliminating sidewalks wherever possible and work with the public?
Thank you. Can I speak to that, Councilperson? Thank you, Greg. No, I'm not interested in that, and I'll tell you why. Because unfortunately, we don't work with the public as well as we think we do, guys. We are not as transparent as we think, as transparent as we think we are. I was surprised how few people knew about this in this neighborhood, that this was going to smack them. And so I understand, and you know I love you, but I would not agree to that at all. Can I keep going for just a second here, or do I have to concede?
Ask Sid. He's on deck.
Sid, may I have a little bit of time? Thank you. One of the reasons I'm talking about attacking this policy and amending this policy to address situations such as this is for 2023, is for 2024, is for 2025, is for all these years we have coming. But this is here now. This is here now. And often, I think honestly, we're so ponderous, and we take so much time and overthink and overwrought and just don't do. And I would love it if I could get the votes to do this. I would appreciate it. And again, if we need something in the nature of a friendly amendment from, I know a gentleman who's very concerned about climate change and the environment. If you would like a friendly amendment, that we would amend my motion to clarify, with the exception of those funds that would be dedicated to existing sidewalk repair, I would welcome that, and I think that's an appropriate amendment. Other than that, I would like this vote, and I am hopeful to get your support. Thank you.
I'll make that amendment.
Thank you.
I'll steal it from you, Ben. I don't know if you plan on it or not.
So this is where we bring in the city attorney to help guide us through this process.
Well, I don't know how helpful I'm going to be in guiding you through this process, but I do have, I guess I do have a thought and a question. So as I, so the issue before the council tonight really has to do with the CIP, which, as I understand it, is not the final word as to what will be built. Instead, it's really a document that is used to plan for how much money the city will borrow. And I'm kind of looking at Jamin to see if he's agreeing with me. So even if the motion, the proposed amendment is adopted, that is not a final decision as to whether there will and will not be a sidewalk built on those streets. As I understand it, that is simply a decision as to how much money the city is going to borrow. So I'm not.
I'm waiting until you're done.
Okay. So if the amendment is approved and the CIP is approved as amended, that simply is a direction to staff when we, when the city goes out to borrow. The amount of borrowing will be reduced by the line item indicated for the sidewalks. Okay? So that, but again, there's still another process that the city has to go through and that staff have to go through, designing a project, bidding it. And that staff is required currently to follow current city policy. I'm guessing that means they're going to have to build a, put a sidewalk in that unless the council tells them, don't do that. And the motion that's, the issue that's before you tonight does not do that. So my suggestion to the council would be, and I've heard a real desire here to grapple with this issue and to do so kind of more comprehensively. So the route forward that makes sense to me is, I don't really care what you do on the CIP, whether you include the money or not, but whether you do or not, you need to come back in the not-too-distant future and decide whether you want sidewalks in that neighborhood or not. Because taking the money out of the borrowing is not going to make that decision. It's not, that decision still has to be made and communicated to staff in terms of what do you want them to do? Because they are right now told by a policy, which is not on the agenda tonight, that they have to include that in their plans for the project. So I think you need to agendize the question of whether there should or should not be sidewalks in this neighborhood, not whether the CIP should include $60,000 or not. That's my suggestion. But again, even if you don't include the 60, I still think you have to come back and have that discussion.
Okay. So Alderperson Boersma was waiting. I know Alderperson Reeves was thinking about doing an amendment. So you guys want to fight it out? Who wants to go first over there?
I'll go.
Okay.
We're leaving out one portion of this thing too, and that is, I think it'd be important for everybody to walk the streets, although I'm not sure I want to have everybody walk the streets because we have a nice, quiet neighborhood, and when the council would come, I think we'd have more loudness. But the issue for me is that along the side of some of the, by where the sidewalks are existing, they're right up against the curb, and it's kind of quaint, actually. And I think to take a look at the whole picture of this, I think is important for people to really understand what this neighborhood is about. I think that having those sidewalks right up against the curb is kind of a nice thing, actually. They seem to work, and there are a couple of streets where that is the case. And I think that if you modify, if you modify that thing about not, I mean, if you remove them, that's one thing, and that may be positive. But if you, again, say, okay, we're going to repair the sidewalks as they stand, that's when you're going to start affecting the trees that are close to that pathway right along the curb. We're going to be doing some damage to, any repair on these things are going to damage, I think, some of the trees in that neighborhood. And again, I would suggest that people, if you don't know the neighborhood, that you should find out about it. It's a very unique neighborhood, and it's something that you should know when you do a vote, you know, on whether or not we're going to even repair the sidewalks. You've got to be, you've got to be really careful about that because our restrictions are going to be that, you know, the sidewalks have so much of a park row, and it may not, I mean, that may not be positive for that neighborhood either. So, you know, you're going to move those sidewalks in because you're going to have to have so much before, from the curb, and it just doesn't seem that it makes sense if you really know the neighborhood. That's all.
All right. Alderperson Hirsch, or Reeves, did you want to add anything, or?
Well, I just, you know, I think it's clear how I feel about it, and I don't want to belabor it or tie up the process. So if it means an agenda item, I'm also fine with taking out $60,000 because I think we could find it in the spirit, I mean, I think we could, I think we could find ways to cut $60,000 whether it ends up, you know, I don't want, I don't want the maintenance, you know, taken out for existing sidewalks, but I don't want these added. And if it means we need to revisit it at another meeting, but whatever needs to happen so that we're, I don't want to earmark money specifically for this, so I'm kind of listening to what the attorney, our attorney says in terms of the realities of, this is, you know, this is my wishes, and what do we need to do in order to, you know, I want to support Alderperson Riley. I agree.
Okay. So we still have an amendment on the table.
May I speak briefly to council's remarks?
Yeah, now we need to wrap it up.
Then I'll be done, or you can throw me out.
You only get three chances here. I think you've exceeded, but we'll let you go.
I want to bring some logic to this discussion, all right? If you have line item budget numbers and you pull the money from those line item budget numbers, then you are defunding those sidewalks. So really, I don't care what the heck they think about revisiting the policy or talking about the policy, or maybe next year, this year, a year from now, whenever. This is here now. This is in this budget. These are line item budget numbers. And if we vote tonight to say, we're not going to fund those dang sidewalks with the exception of monies dedicated to repairing existing sidewalks on those streets, then we have, as far as I'm concerned, killed these sidewalks. And I think it's appropriate. I think it's an appropriate vote. I disagree with the council. Thank you.
Point of order, is there an amendment to the amendment that Lisa Reeves had presented?
No. There was a second.
I thought I heard it presented.
I don't think it was finished, and if there was, it certainly wasn't a second. So you were talking about making an amendment to, for the, to leave the money in there to do the maintenance.
Right. That's what I'd like to do.
You want to make that amendment?
I would move to amend the CIP to remove funding for the construction of the, those three, let's see, Sherman, Grant, and Prospect, with the exception of maintenance for existing sidewalks.
Second.
Okay. So there's another amendment with a motion and a second, and we're not going to talk about this one for a half hour, are we? Okay. But are there any questions on this one? Alderperson Caravelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the question of maintaining existing sidewalks, just to get really detailed and picky, are we defining maintenance of existing sidewalks if that was to include removing portions of existing sidewalk and replacing them? Would the scale that they currently exist at, if they're three feet wide, does that mean when we're maintaining them and upgrading them, do they then have to become five feet wide in the process of upgrading, maintaining, and replacing them? Or, I mean, can we, if there's three feet sidewalks there now, you know, and I'm not sure, I haven't walked. sure, I haven't walked through the neighborhood today.
I don't know what the code is. Rodney, can you help us with that one?
Just a very picky question.
So when I suggested the concern about maintenance, I wasn't even contemplating the three-foot sidewalk that's behind the curb and gutter. I was, I was discussing more in theory, the five-foot wide sidewalk that runs along the south side of Prospect that's existing and would need to have sections repaired because of tripping hazards or whatever along that stretch. Your point is well taken. Sidewalks that are directly behind the curb, according to the facility design manual, would need to be a minimum of six feet wide unless there's a three-foot terrace. So if there is interest in having a sidewalk directly behind a sidewalk reinstalled, I think you would have to meet that requirement.
Alder Person Borzma.
That's my concern. I mean, these sidewalks are different. And if you start, if you start messing around with these sidewalks and having to replace them and make them wide instead of, they're pretty narrow, you're going to be, you're going to be doing exactly the things that we're concerned about, which is hamstringing Rodney and everybody in the city to have to go along with the existing policy. It just seems, that seems not the way we should be operating. So if you're talking about repair of existing sidewalks and you have to make them wide and ruin trees, that defeats the whole purpose. This is a different kind of neighborhood. You should, you should know the neighborhood before you make a decision like that, to have to hamstring people into repair when the repair may be just as detrimental to that particular area as putting in new sidewalks in other areas. I don't, I can't stress that enough because this is a special, a special place where if you're going to repair the sidewalks, I would just see repairing, repairing the narrow ones to keep them narrow.
Alder Person Hirsch.
First of all, this is, what we're discussing is bigger than just certain sidewalks. This is our whole CIP budget and all we're doing is getting stuck on just sidewalks, which is kind of disappointing. Second, as our attorney has talked about, is that even if we approve this funding, doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily approve the sidewalks at this. It still has to go through design, we still have to discuss this. I'd rather be holistic instead of just saying, because everybody's emotional tonight, let's just take that all out. Let's be thoughtful, just like Riley has talked about, we, now's the time to be thoughtful and not emotional. And I would like to, us to have this as an agenda item and really get the true information before we make this snap decision tonight based on, you know, and I, the residents, I admire them coming here, but I really want us to be thoughtful and respectful of not only this neighborhood and really start looking at other neighborhoods. I mean, we don't have anybody else from other neighborhoods, but in previous years we have. And I think we need to take a step back and really examine this wholeheartedly before we make these snap decisions. And then I would actually ask the council, is there anything else on this CIP that you have a problem with? Or are we just going to pass it? Because this, we're really being tunnel vision tonight and it's really kind of disappointing that we're, we're only looking at this one issue.
Okay. Alder Person Riley, and then hopefully we'll finish this one off.
Yep, we are. What Riley said actually is Riley's sick of being ponderous and thinking and thinking and thinking and thinking and not acting. This is straightforward in my mind, it honestly is. You know, it's, are we going to, are we going to defy the wishes of these constituents? Are we going to throw a bunch of concrete slabs in this neighborhood where they don't belong? It's that simple, it's not complex. It doesn't involve the entire world or the, you know, the Mideast peace process or anything else. It is what it is. I believe we have what we need before us to vote on this particular issue. If we need to address the concern properly stated by Councilperson Caravelo, then I would suggest we just simply state that any repair and maintenance would be within the context of their current dimensions for the sidewalks. I would offer that as a further amendment, I guess, to what we have if we can. Okay, then let's, I'm, I've done what I can.
Okay.
We can vote.
All right.
Make sure we understand what the motion is.
Yeah, go ahead. We have, we're on the second amendment.
Second amendment is to amend the CIP to remove funding of sidewalk construction on Grant, Sherman, and Prospect Streets with the exception of the maintenance of existing
So do we know what maintenance means? It sounds to me like, do we, and do we have a dollar amount for that? Okay, all right. So that's the motion.
Okay.
All right. One last quick.
Last call.
Yeah, one last quick. Again, I admire Tim's motion on this, his passion with it.
Thank you.
And Tim, if it wasn't, if it wasn't on the CIP that you're talking about, I would support you. But I can't support this because it's like Regina was saying and other people have said, this is about the CIP, it's about, just about borrowing money that we need for these projects. The issue's about the sidewalk, the issue about the policy can be handled at a different time. And I'm all for that and I'm all for looking at each individual property so that we can make sure that it gets done properly. I mean, I don't want to take these streets, these trees down. That's not what I want to do. We also have to consider ADA. You know, the, there's certain stipulations that are within the ADA that require certain sized sidewalks, and I believe that's what Rodney was referring to. If you have the sidewalk right up to the curb, that's six feet, that's ADA. That's federal, that's not state. So, yeah, I, I struggle. I want, I understand where Tim is coming from on this and I hear what the people are saying and I want to go along with them, but this is not the time or place to do that. The time or place to do that is when each individual one comes to the, comes to the council.
Alder Person Borzma.
I'm not going to support the second amendment made by Lisa, and that is because maintenance is too, is too iffy. And I think it's not, it's not specific enough, so I certainly think that Riley's motion, I'll, I'll support, but I'm not, I'm not going to support the second amendment.
Okay.
I'll withdraw it.
Call the question.
Because of the same reason.
I think we're ready to vote on the amendment.
Now which one are we voting on?
She's withdrawing her amendment. Councilperson Reeves, as I understand, correct?
Oh, I didn't hear you.
So. Because I have the same concern as Sid.
So who seconded that amendment?
I did and I, I will acquiesce.
Okay. So we're back to the original amendment, which was?
The original amendment is to amend the CIP plan to remove planned sidewalk construction on Grant, Sherman, and Prospect Streets.
Okay. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I think the ayes have it, but we can take a roll call.
We should do a roll call.
Okay, that's fine.
Borzma?
Aye.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Doom?
Aye.
Healy?
No.
Hirsch?
Nope.
Jensen?
Nope.
Lagaki?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Bartlett?
No.
That motion carries on a vote of seven to four.
Okay, thank you. So that takes us back to the original CIP as amended. And then, did you have something, Jayman?
Yeah, just so we don't lose sight, just one, one comment and then one request. The packet materials do not reflect the reduction in the landmark request. It was originally $30,000, that's what the packet is showing. It's, they actually knocked it down to 13,000?
Thirteen.
13,000, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. I also do have a request. We, we are working through a potential grant request for an additional rear-accessible minivan for the Stoughton Transit again for 2020. It'd be an 80/20 match, we're estimating $40,000 total. The match would be $8,000 from the city. It's not included in the packet materials, I would like to have that considered in the 2020 CIP as well, too. It would be $8,000 for the city match. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alder Person Borzma.
Yeah, I see we lost Riley for a minute.
He'll be back.
I move to amend the motion for the CIP proposal to remove an item.
Okay, which item?
And that would be on page 17 of 26, which is the motor patrol unit for the police department. I would like, I'd like to move that, that particular item be removed from the CIP.
Motorcycle.
There a second? Sorry, what was that?
I'm asking that the motor patrol unit of $20,000 in the, on page 17 of the CIP be removed from the CIP.
It's on page 64 of the packet.
Okay, did everybody find it? It's on page 64 of the PDF and as Sid mentioned, page 18 of the actual CIP.
I believe it's 17.
17?
Yes, 17.
Oh, 17, yep. Is there a second?
I'll second to open this discussion on it.
All right. So there's a motion and a second, and Alder Person Borzma?
This particular motor patrol unit is a, an electric motorcycle for $20,000. I think that although it gives me the possibility of a great quip, when I saw this as a $20,000 electric motorcycle, I was shocked to have that in our CIP. I think that that's, that's, that's just not necessary to our city. We are looking, we are looking at a, at a budget that is, that is pretty tight this year, and I think a $20,000 motorcycle for the police department is, again, not something I can vote for.
Okay. The chief is here, did you want to comment or?
Well, the $20,000 is an either/or for a regular motorcycle or electric motorcycle to begin a motor unit patrol for traffic enforcement, and that was the purpose of the budget request.
Well, well, I'm, I'm saying I don't think we need either a regular motorcycle or an electric motorcycle for the, for the city, for the police department. So I'm asking that this be removed from the, from the CIP.
Okay. Any questions or comments or Alder Person Hirsch?
Actually, I don't mind having this item in. In fact, I think it's a good idea and I would hope that you continue on making sure that it's an electric, because that's what you presented during the CIP thing and that's what I will vote for. If it goes the other way, then I might pull it out.
It is our intent to continue to look at having it be an electric motorcycle.
Alder Person Healy?
Would this motor patrol come with a change in staffing levels or would it just be a different option?
No, it's a different option for vehicle use. We'd also use it for, you know, park patrol, things like that, getting into areas that you can't get into with a squad car. It's more efficient than a bicycle because you can still get around quickly if need be. Because of our minimum staffing levels, we need to have that ability to get that, that additional car to calls if needed, so that would allow us to do that in an efficient
Anybody else have questions or comments? Alder Person Caravelo?
So this vehicle would not be replacing any current vehicles or anything, this would simply be supplementing what you currently have.
That's correct. It's a, it's a, would be a, an addition to what we currently have in our fleet.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No.
No.
We'll do a roll call on that one, too.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Doom?
No.
I have a point of question.
Oh, sure.
Aye says that you want it removed?
Yes.
And no, okay.
Yep, did everyone grasp that? Okay. Yeah, we can start over.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Doom?
No.
Healy?
Aye.
Hirsch?
No.
Jensen?
Nope.
Lagaki?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye, aye, oh, Sid, a big one.
Schumacher?
No.
Bartlett?
No.
Borzma? That motion fails on a vote of five to six.
Whatever, I'm sorry that you didn't.
All right. And then, I think I heard two other requests from the finance director. Would somebody make a motion or like to consider a motion for those? And we can repeat them. Your request was to make the adjustment for the landmarks and then also the adjustment for the cab grant.
Correct.
For the taxi grant.
Both of them.
As a second.
Okay. Yeah, so I heard a motion by Lisa, and who seconded it?
I don't know, I heard it seconded over there. Me, I'll second that.
Phil second, okay. All right, any discussion on those two items?
Could you repeat them again?
Sure. The items where we're going to, originally we had a $30,000 request from Landmarks to do some, some work on the downtown historic district. Fill in the blanks if you wish.
I'm prepared to answer very many questions. There have been good questions all along the way and I have an awful cold, so I'm not going to do a can, but we're requesting $13,000 that if, after our outreach and education that's already started is a positive among property owners and business owners, we will be going forward to try to establish a local historic district. If that does not fall upon favor of all of those involved parties, we most likely would want to have access to that money to keep doing it the way we've been doing it. But there will be an upcoming presentation and an importance of trying to protect our historic downtown, and we see this as one way to do that. And so, we're asking for the $13,000, not 30, which was both the potential design guidelines. It's going to take a while and I think this is going to be a bit, so we're going to do it, I believe, intentionally and clearly. So that is what that $13,000 is.
And then the other part of that was to put 8,000 back in for a potential grant request that we'd make for the shared ride service for another van with a lift on it. And I forget what the ratio is.
It's an 80/20 match, so we're estimating about $40,000. The last, the one for 19 came in at right around 38, 39,000, so we're estimating 40 at this point. So the match would be 8,000 for the city.
Anybody have any questions or comments on either one of them? Oh, Alder Person Caravelo, are you up or down?
Well, I have a question or comment about neither of those two specific things, but there's just something else I noticed looking at the CIP budget that I wanted to ask a question about, but I'm good with those two things.
Do you want to hold that thought until we vote on this? Okay, don't forget. All right, any questions or comments on the amendment on the table? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that amendment carries. Alder Person Caravelo?
Okay, my question to pick on Greg, again, quickly since I just noticed this, there's a line here that says electric police BIKS, B-I-K-S.
It should say bikes.
Okay, so that is.
Bicycles.
That is multiple bikes, not, I wanted to make sure that that was not police bike, van.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted clarification. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have any other amendments that they would like to make on the 2020 Okay, hearing none, so that takes us back to the original motion as amended twice. Anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The CIP is passed. Thank you. That was spirited. You want to keep going or do you need a break?
Keep going.
Keep going?
Breaks are speaking.
Okay.
Break and keep going.
We'll go back to where we were going to start on new business, and that's R 153 of 2019, and this is coming, the next three And this is coming, the next three are coming from Stoughton Utilities. And it is Power Week, right?
Yep.
Public Power Week.
It's Public Power Week, yes.
And maybe Jill can talk about that in the course of these three items. But all the person Hirsch, would you like to take these away?
Sure, I'd like to introduce R one fifty-three, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the change order number one to the two nineteen street utility construction project and ISO move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All the person Jensen, all the person Hirsch.
I'm just gonna pass it off to Jill because she has, seems like slides and everything, which I don't have.
I wanted to share, I think around June, we actually approved the CIP, which is basically the report card for the wastewater treatment plant. And we had high scores in all aspects, except for we had recognized a lot of INI, which is inflow and infiltration. Inflow typically comes from like sources such as sump pumps, infiltration, just as we've got here. While the two thousand and nineteen capital improvements project was going, we found that we had significant inflow at the joints of the, of the clay pipe that's on Main Street. That project fortunately was directly adjacent to the work we were already doing, worked with city attorney to do a change order to address that inflow. It's significant. On the top picture, you can kind of see the depth and this is very much up on the west side, so actually in the very, you know, the beginning sections, the upstream sections of that pipe. The picture on the right-hand side illustrates basically that inflow. It was coming in from the, the top and from the sides and under a fair amount of pressure. And almost every single joint that we came to, those joints every two feet, we had significant water coming in. So just wanted to highlight that. It was a project that in the end, we had about fifty, five hundred feet of pipe ultimately that has this issue going on with it. We wanted to try to do this, though, a couple of things. We had already decided that no work would be done with the two thousand and twenty Main Street project that the DOT is working on for utilities. So we wanted to try to address this issue and do that as cost-effective as we could. So initially, what we thought we would do is line that pipe, but a section of it's six inch and so we're not able to line six inch pipe. So we needed to replace that and that's actually what this change order is. That change order then was two hundred and fifty feet of clay pipe, six inch that was replaced with PVC, eight inch, and then six manholes and that total was ninety-six thousand six hundred and two dollars and fifty-eight cents. This project does actually, the next item also addresses the same thing. And so, we'll highlight here, really related to the two change orders. And you see that water that's running out, that we basically achieved with this project, a hundred thousand gallons of clear water being eliminated from going to the wastewater treatment plant daily. Significant, that's five to ten percent of actually the inflow into the wastewater treatment plant depending on flows. So significant success there. The pipe section there that you saw was actually what change order number two is. Once we got in there, we were looking only to replace the six inch pipe. We found that, we knew that we, in televising, we had kind of something strange going on. So it looked like there was a transition into that eight inch pipe. And so we felt comfortable doing two hundred and fifty feet of pipe, addressed that six inch. Once we got there, that pipe is actually six inch as well. So we had a hundred and seventeen feet of pipe that we needed to replace to address this issue. The remainder of the pipe section will be lined in, basically, once the DOT is done with their project, then we'll go in line that rest of that pipe, which will be significantly cheaper than what we needed to do for replacement. And that second change order, not to get too far ahead, was twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. But substantial to the impact to the wastewater treatment plant removing this INI.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All the person Schumacher?
Just wanna, thanks for the, for the presentation and the video and all that because my question was going to be what was defined as inflow in there, but you know, clearly the picture showed that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion on the floor for the, for the first change order. And any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. And then the next one is for the second change order, all the person Hirsch.
I'd like to introduce R one fifty-four, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the change order number two to, to the two thousand and nineteen street and utility construction project. And Jill just explained what that one is, an ISO move.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Next one also comes from utilities, all the person Hirsch.
This is ordinance, ordinance twenty-four of two thousand and nineteen, amending section two dash two fifty-six. City of Stoughton code of ordinances relating to the composition of the utilities committee, an ISO move.
Second.
That's actually first reading?
Oh, yeah.
You'd have to wait for that if you want to get it done. Jill, do you see, is there, is there an urgent need to?
There's an urgent need.
No.
We could definitely go to a second reading, it's just that we'll live within our committee with six members as opposed to seven.
Yeah, maybe you want to just give a quick overview of it though? If you have any questions between now and the next meeting, we can get them answered.
Sure, and Jill can chime in. What we had is, we had two, three citizen members and three council members. And one of our citizen members took a different position in the city. I think she's coaching basketball or being on the basketball somehow in the city. And so she no longer has the time to come, so we have this vacant position. And this citizen recommended a different person to take her place. This person doesn't live within our city limits, but lives outside the city limits, but still is serviced by the Stoughton Utilities. And then that got us to thinking, should we really revisit it? Who should be on this utilities committee? Should it just be Stoughton citizens, the city citizens? Or should we actually have some input from the other people in the surrounding communities that actually get serviced by Stoughton Utilities? And we thought that was kind of fair to have them have a voice at the table, too. And so that's what this is all about, is if we have the opportunity to get somebody from a outside city Stoughton proper, you know, let's grab them for one position. If we can't find anybody, it just goes back to a third city position. But it would be nice to have representation from outside the city. So that's what it all is.
All right, all the person Reeves?
I just had a question on the last line. Are citizen members compensated?
I actually don't, I don't know that. I don't believe so, but I honestly don't know.
I don't believe so.
Says shall serve with such compensation as determined by the city council by resolution from time to time sort of November.
Yeah, I don't think there's been any resolution by the city council that I'm aware of.
My suspicion, and I don't know this for, for certain, but I'm, the last two lines pretty much kind of read on a lot of the different committees, so I don't know if that's just something that gets carried forward.
All right, yeah, all the person Borzma and then Director Gillingham's here as well.
That's exactly what I was gonna do is, because I saw her hand raised in the audience.
They are not in the payroll.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, this will be back at the next meeting and then, as well as a potential appointment at that meeting. So if it goes through, then I'll be having a mayor's appointment. If it doesn't go through, then I'll, I'll look for somebody that's a city resident is what I'll do. But we'd like to at least get them both on the next meeting. So if we go forward with the ordinance, we can appoint somebody and have them ready for the November utility committee meeting is, is the goal. Because right now, we're down one person. Okay. That takes us to item number eight. This one's coming from finance committee. All the person Schumacher?
All right, resolution R one fifty-five, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Robinson Brothers Environmental Inc. for the two thousand and nineteen demolition and abatement of former public works facility, ISO move.
Second.
Second by all the person Jensen, all the person Schumacher?
All right, so the bid had come in at a hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred. This was the lowest of the five bids that were accepted for this. And one note about this, that the estimated completion for the demolition would be somewhere around end of calendar year.
Any questions or comments? This went through finance earlier tonight, we wanted to get it here so they could get going on the project. And then Director Shil, if you have anything you want to add?
The low bidder was the only one that attended the, the bid visit where they could actually walk through and observe the facility firsthand. The others did not. We've had experience with the low bidder on previous projects. I think they've done successful work. They're the abatement contractor and will likely sub out some of the excavation work separately.
Okay. All the person Jensen?
I was just a question, did RDA have any question or any input on this?
Well, this is a public works site, which is still under the city's control, basically.
That's, that's what I thought.
But the idea is to get the building demo, then the DNR is gonna do some testing. And the goal would be to have the site ready for the spring, so then the RDA and, and the developer they're working with can hopefully begin a project. All the person Borzma?
Just a question for Rodney. So they have good insurance and we don't have any liability from these folks?
No, the, the bid specifications required insurance. Now we'll move into the evaluation of the insurance documents before we execute the agreements, but this is the award of the bid. The city attorney's involved with the review of the contract. A.J. Gillingham's involved in the risk management aspect of it, but certainly that's evaluated moving forward.
There's insurance and then there's insurance and that's my point, that, that should be really looked at, I think.
See your hand out back there.
We do review each and every one of those line by line, just so you're aware. If I have questions, they go back to Rodney, back to the contractor. So we look at every one of them page by page. And then Attorney Draghi also looks at them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. We've already done number nine. Number ten is discussion and possible action related to questions regarding Kettle Park West Phase Two tax incremental financing request. From the last meeting, there were some questions and then there were a few that came afterward. So in the packet, what I tried to do was, is provide the answers that you were looking for. One question I received is we're looking for kind of a cost comparison from the two thousand and sixteen, which was the original TIF request versus the two thousand and nineteen, so we could look at everything side by side. So the first slide in, in your packet is my effort to really condense what was in the actual TIF application on page twenty-one, I think it was. So this is kind of a simplified version of it, so you could see that everything is separated as far as the onsite and offsite improvements and what the cost differences were from the initial request to the most recent request. And I have that slide in there actually a couple of different times. The original slide that I was referring to in the TIF application is that exhibit six dash one, which is a little bit hard to read, but it has the same information in there. And then the developers for development group heard the questions asked at the last meeting and they provided us with the chart that has the blue and green lines going horizontally and then also the summary that follows it that's in the packet. So really what we wanted to try to do is make sure that everybody understood that there was an exhibit in the request that showed the comparisons and then break it down in a more user-friendly way for you guys. And I don't know if there's any additional questions on the information that's contained in the charts. Certainly would entertain them. Daniel Callahan is here from forward as well, if you have any questions for him. All the person Lagaki?
It was a very particular one and I'm partly cloudy tonight.
Okay.
But I just was curious, I, about what was their source for coming up with one hundred eight children in that school district? And I just didn't, I asked for that and I just don't see it and I.
I have a handout for that.
Thank you.
And then I know Dan has something as well.
All good.
And I can pass this around.
Thank you.
And, and that's a question that I'm gonna answer as we go through this. So I'll be glad to do that. So, on the, on the PowerPoint that's in there, so the original question is in the chart. I don't hear any questions on that. And that information was in various committees along the way. We discussed it at finance when we received the binder and I think we had two or three whacks at it at finance as well as at the council. Question number two was looking for a clarification regarding the decision-making process for the, for the city's obligation and discretion. And there was a question about how much their initial request was for. And it was for actually eleven million one hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars, which you should see that number, it would be the total of the numbers in the chart. So that refers back to that. And I don't know if there was any additional questions on that one. And then there was really a question about what is the city's discretion and what is the city's obligation? And I think that there was a couple of items that, all those items were always the city's obligation and what we did is we attempted to simplify things by pulling out some items that may be considered optional and those are the ones that we called discretion. Certainly if the council doesn't feel that those are optional and they need to be done, we can certainly eliminate the discretion terminology in our discussion. But that's what we were attempting to do is make it easier to, to navigate through and not complicate, complicate things. And I don't know if there's any questions on that one. All the person Hirsch?
Well, first off, thank you very much for taking the time to putting this together and I'm sorry if I offended anybody, that was not my intent. My intent was to try to get as much information for the council that isn't on finance and hadn't, wasn't privy to the binder or, you know, all the, other discussions and sort of just got kind of nailed with, you know, a request at a council meeting. I guess I still, when you say city obligation, that's still a TIF request. We're not really obligated to pay for that. And I just want that to be clear, that this whole seven million is a TIF request and you just broke it down into if we were gonna fund the seven million, the city kind of wants control over this three point eight because we have the expertise with Rodney and his staff to do the work, you know, to the best, their ability and, and do really great work. But it's, we're not obligated. That's, I guess the word obligated sounds like we have to do that and that, those, those were like the trigger words that kind of set me off last time because we're not really obligated. We're, this is still a seven million dollar TIF request and we can choose to fund any of it, all of it, parts of it. That's our job, not that we're actually obligated to actually do anything like that. And I know it's just, it's just semantics, but it's, those words, you know, can be read differently.
Sure.
And I didn't mean to like offend anybody and I'm sorry if I, my questions did, that was not the intent. My intent was to slow it down, let us really think about it and get more information for the people who aren't on finance.
Sure, and, and that's fine. And we, what we're trying to do is just make sure you have all the information you need to make whatever decision you make at the end of the day. And really, the original request was over eleven million. Right now, it's seven million. If you were to do the Robie and the fifty-one intersection at some point, that's gonna add to it. And what we were trying to do is just illustrate the savings. It's all TIF and they're, at the end of the day, it's all TIF and it's a pay-go, so the idea would be at least if the city is gonna require things to be done, it would be initially, you know, on the developer and then they would. would be initially, you know, on the developer and then they would try to cash flow and be reimbursed, would be their incentive to continue to go forward. They would be getting reimbursed along the way. And there is also, what really doesn't show up in here very well is in addition to the TIP, there is also developer money that goes into this. And I think that, I forget which report it was on, but they're making an investment really out of their pocket as well in addition to TIP. They're borrowing money to do a portion of their project. And I don't remember where that money is, what that number was at this point. But they are making some financial investment in addition to whatever incentives we do or don't provide them. And really the numbers that are on here, everything is subject to negotiation in the developer's agreement. And we're not at the point where we've even entertained that discussion yet. We've had no discussion with the developers as far as any negotiation. All we've done is said if we decide we want to go forward as a city, here's how we can protect ourselves financially. And that's really what we tried to put together for the Council to consider. The third question that is in there is one I'm going to let Jamie answer because this is outside of any expertise I could pretend to have. And that was basically, you know, what our options would be if we decided to not move forward or close the TIP early. One point I would make is on Monday, the construction company for the hotel did drop off the blueprints. So it looks like the hotel is going to go forward. We're feeling much better than we did a week ago at this time. So I think that one of the scenarios that plays out there may or may not come into play here. So maybe Jamie, you can just kind of walk us through what would happen if we decided to close down the TIP early.
Sure. See, this works. It might be a little hard to see, but I'll walk you through what these documents actually mean. And they're not going to show up. Let's try this again. One. All right, we did it. So just as we started down this road, this document is actually from May. And this is something that Ellers put together for us. And we, as we, we knew the TIP application was coming in, so we wanted to start planning ahead for this. When I asked Ellers to do some work on this in terms of doing the actual forecast out, I asked them to do three different scenarios, one which has actually worked out pretty well since the question was asked. One is just assuming that the senior housing is done, which we know has happened. The second one is this one, which includes the senior housing and hotel. I know this is difficult to read, but I'll kind of walk you through what it all means. And then the third option was basically Phase One and Two all in. So it'd be senior housing, hotel, and then obviously the Phase Two coming through. So one of the questions was, well, if we just kind of walk away from this, not doing anything with Phase Two, when can we close this TIP? And kind of what would be the financial impacts of that? Now, keep in mind, this information is from May, so it's a little bit dated. So I kind of threw out just some estimates in terms of what we think would happen. Of course, we're forecasting out a number of years. Since we already know that the hotel is going forward, it's probably more realistic to look at this option, which would be the senior housing and the hotel. So what I did today to hopefully explain this a little bit better is this option. So this is the senior housing and hotel. Blow this up a little bit here. Okay. So this column here represents the principal, the debt that we borrowed. So this is the entire $4.1 million that we borrowed for the Phase One Commercial Center. This is the associated interest. And this just kind of, these two columns work their way down in terms of principal remaining and interest remaining per the repayment schedule. Now, the earliest we can call this debt is on April 1st, 2029, okay? So the earliest we could potentially call this debt would be April 1st, 2029. This cumulative fund balance basically comes from this document here. So I know it's hard to read, but this kind of works through projected revenues of the TIP. And these are the projected costs. So this is your debt service column here and working its way across. And these numbers, I know they're hard to see, but I basically mirrored them over to the spreadsheet so you could see it a little bit easier. And it works through cumulative fund balance here, which is basically the savings within the TIP district itself, TIP number seven. And then the principal outstanding is the debt service that's remaining. So when we kind of work through this, you can see, let's just take 2021, for instance. Total amount remaining is the total debt that's due. So that's principal and interest due over the life of this debt, right? Cumulative fund balance is $281,000. Obviously not enough to pay off everything, right? So we kind of work our way down and as time goes on, we end up in 2025, which ends up being the earliest date that we could potentially close this TIP district. Because what happens is at that point in time, with the existing debt and interest payment schedule that would be due through April 1st, 2029, is approximately $3 million, $3 million, $8,000. And then we have our cumulative fund balance, okay? So this cumulative fund balance works this way down. Remaining interest is $2.6 million, which is here. And then the remaining interest. And this interest is basically up through April 1st, 2029. Does that make sense? Because that's the earliest we could call it, but we still have to, basically, we're still going to accrue interest the entire time and pay this off as we go. So that's the earliest that we could actually kind of close that debt out. Now, if we term this district in 2025, I'm no expert on this, but I would have to assume we'd have to approach something called a crossover refunding, which is where we would take this money, throw it in escrow, and it would just basically be paid out of escrow until we can call these bonds in 2029. Does that make sense? It'd be kind of off the city's books, it'd be in an escrow. But we can't call it till 2029. And that's how this would kind of work. And then at the end of the day, when that crossover refunding is done, we would get this potential cash outflow of approximately $700,000. Forty percent or so of that would be the city's portion of that. Does that make sense, how that would work? So that's kind of the situation we're in right now. Really, we could close this TIP more than likely we'd have to go the crossover refunding step until we can call these bonds in 2029. So I'm not, I can't, I can almost guarantee that there won't be any money upfront during this time period until we called these bonds. I imagine we could show that we have enough money to basically fund the rest of the principal payments, fund the accrued interest that we're going to accrue through 2029, plus some interest earnings within escrow. And we might get a little cash outflow when we close the TIP in 2025. And then whatever's left over in escrow after we refund these bonds in 2029, then we would get the rest of that as well. Does that make sense? It gets a little challenging within that window. But for argument's sake, let's just say that we have to wait until 2029. That's when this $700,000 will be available. Forty percent would come to the city. The remaining would go to the other taxing jurisdictions. At the time we term the TIP, there's this fun little equation of what we get to add to our base tax levy every single year. So not every year, but when we close the levy, we close the TIP, then we actually get to add an amount to the base levy. It's this formula of the current value within the TIP, it's the current assessed value within the TIP. You divide it by the city's equalized value, multiply that by 50%, and then multiply that by the base allowable levy. It's kind of a challenge to actually predict what this is because this is a certain point in time. We only know the equalized value at this point in time, which is this number. And we only know our base allowable levy, which is at this point in time as well, too. So when we, let's get back to the presentation. So where that comes into play is this section here. So you can see where I said cash out would be approximately $800,000. We saw that number. And then the increase to the base levy would be the $170,000, okay? So that's in perpetuity. We get to add that to our base levy. And then every year from then, we take our net new construction and we get the percentage and we multiply that by the base levy. Does all of that kind of make sense, how this would play out just with the senior housing and hotel in play? Okay. So again, long story short, we'd probably have to wait till 2029 to see any cash outflow, potentially a little bit upfront, but we'd have to guarantee that enough money would be in escrow to be able to crossover refund these bonds. And then in 2025, if we close the TIP early with the hotel, we would get that slight bump in our base allowable levy. $170,000, fair amount. If we go through with Phase Two, and again, this is a number of assumptions, but again, we could possibly close in 2027. Scenario three would increase the base levy from $170,000 to $385,000. And there's a two-year gap there, that you wouldn't have that $170,000. But again, this $385,000 would then pretty much be in perpetuity. It'd be there, be part of our base levy, and then we would increase it by net new construction every single year. If we closed the TIP as early as we possibly could, at that point in time, the cash out would actually be pretty minimal in that situation. Now, you can run the TIP longer and get a bigger cash out. You can run it till the end of the life and then you could look at doing something with affordable housing or something like that. But that's just, that was just to kind of illustrate how this would all work. Again, we're trying to forecast out six, seven, eight years in terms of what we think could possibly happen. Scenario one and scenario three here are pretty similar in terms of what the cash out would be if we closed the TIP as soon as we possibly could. The number that kind of matters and impacts the city the most is really this increase to the base levy because that's guaranteed money every single year then that you get to increase your base levy by. And that's a pretty important number. Yeah, the cash outflow is great, but by getting all that extra incremental value within the TIP district itself, then we get to apply this to our base levy. So this is a pretty important number to pay attention to as well, too. I know it's a lot to take in. It's kind of hard to, it's even harder to explain in some instances. We kind of went through this whole increase to base levy calculation through Finance when Denise Turanek was on the committee as well, too. We ran it through the DOR. They approved the methodology and said, yep, that's how it's going to work out. So again, this is, these numbers are pretty important because it's the difference between, let's say our base levy is $7 million right now, which is kind of in the ballpark, then your base levy is $7,170,000 and then you multiply that by your net new construction every year and it just builds and builds and builds. Or you wait two years and you have $7,385,000 to apply your net new construction to every single year. Does that make sense, how that increase to base levy is kind of in perpetuity? And it's a pretty important number to look at as well.
One question. So if we did with the TIP, then your TIP would not close in 2025, but probably close in a longer period because you're actually, it takes longer to now, because what money are you using to actually pay off the additional $7 million? Because you're adding to, you're not freeing up any money, you're actually using more money.
Well, and Ellers' analysis took all of that into account. So I know this is really hard to see, but this section here is the existing debt on Phase One, right? This is the Phase One MRO that we kind of talked about. They met some objectives, so we owe them a little extra money. The Phase Two MRO column here is the $3 million that they're asking for, plus the interest on the debt that they take out. And then our capital expenditures are here. So Ellers worked all the way across and soon, all of our out-of-pocket costs are done. We've done all of the capital expenditures from the city side, which we'll, for now, we'll call them city obligations, but that's what that column represents. So Ellers took all of that into consideration when they worked down into the cumulative fund balance here. So is 2027 likely? Maybe, maybe not. Could be '28, could be '29. It all depends on how things work out. But it wouldn't, they've still taken into consideration all of the costs that the city's going to incur with this Phase Two. Does that make sense? So there's not going to be any longer delay just because we're guaranteeing them $3 million in an MRO and some offsite project costs. They factored that all into their forecast and worked down. And at this point in time, they're saying 2027 is the earliest possible close if everything happens on time. So it's not, it's not looking at it to say, well, we're going to have all these extra costs and that's going to delay this. No, they've already taken that into consideration. Now, if it doesn't go as planned and things get delayed a little bit, yeah, then maybe you're looking at '28, '29. But you may have the same thing with the hotel. It may not get done as fast as we think it does. It may not have quite the value that we think it does. So instead of 2025, maybe you're looking at '26 or even '27. So there's always that risk, but it's not that we didn't take into account all of the potential costs that the city would have.
Any other questions on all of that? Is your head spinning? You know, the first time you showed it to me, I'm like, oh my goodness.
I might have to read.
We can certainly send out whatever you want. I mean, and if you have any questions, you know, we can always, you know, set up a meeting or we can talk about it at the next Finance or whatever you guys want to do. The next question relates to what Gene brought up on the school enrollment. So I think you received the handout. And that was something that Forward gave us way back, and I think it was April. And this is national averages, so obviously it could change. Like I clicked on, I think it was Cedarburg today, and they're averaging much more than that per household on their new construction. So it can vary. And I did have a, received some information from the school district, and I know Brett was there at their meeting. And the school district, right now, they're, they do a Third Friday count in order for their funding from the Department of Public Instruction. And their Third Friday count is in September. So they received their numbers and released them last night. And currently they have 2,966 students enrolled in Stoughton School District in various ways. They're not all in classrooms. Some of them are doing virtual learning and whatever else. It's not always.
Only 27 are in virtual learning?
Yeah. So, but that's the number they use. And out of the 2,966, they have 208 students that are currently opening, open enrolling out of the district. So they're not coming to Stoughton Schools, they're going somewhere else. There's many reasons for that. Some of them maybe never went to Stoughton Schools, they just moved here and they just stayed in their current school. Some of them maybe their parents, you know, work between here and Madison and they drop them off on the way, or their daycare is between here and Madison. And so they survey their students to get that information. And then there's 68 students that came from another district to Stoughton. So the net loss for this year is 140. So if you take the 140 into the 2,966, 4.75% of the students opened and rolled out of the district, basically, that was the net loss, anyway. Which means, back to the sheet here, if they're projecting 104 students under Option B, which is the current plan, if you take the 104 and you multiply it by the 4.75, it'll be five students. So with their projections in this document, the school district, over the course of the development, would gain 99 students, basically, is the summary. And obviously, it's not a perfect science, but that's about as close as I can come right now. So hopefully that helps at least understand that question a little bit more. And if you need any additional information from the school district, we can get it. Or maybe Brett has something that he can share from last night.
The overall enrollment for comparing just 2018, 2019, there are 65 students lost this year. And this is at least, this is probably the lowest number of a trend that began in 2002. So it's been a continuous plummet of the enrollment from 2002 and it still exists through today. But, you know, like I say, I thought that we were going to see maybe a leveling out, maybe like, you know, a zero sum gain for this year, but that wasn't the case. So the numbers continue to drop. And the most, they mostly dropped out from River Bluff, which was kind of unusual. But when you look further back into the lower grade levels, the numbers are just very, very low. They're, you know, even when I was on the board, the numbers were, we had 200 per grade level per school. And now you're lucky to see like 150. And that trend keeps continuing to go downward. So we'll get to a point where we're going to have a high school of less than, if it continues on, we'll have a high school of less than 800. While I was on the board, it dropped under 1,000. And when you start to get toward those low numbers, then you have to start to reconsider your programs, your staffing levels, your building. your, your staffing levels, your, your building occupancy, you know. Tim, remember, we're closing, closing Yehara down. And there's always a potential that, you know, it could come to that again. So it's a continuously shrinking district, and there, there just aren't a lot of options.
All the person Borisman, then Hersh.
With all due respect, what, what, what we were told when we started the project for phase one is that the addition of Walmart and the other stores were going to increase capacity of people moving into the city because of those particular entities, and that has not happened. And the second, the second one is that kids, kids are moving out of the district rather than being replenished by, by new housing. So I hear the point, and I'm certainly in favor of that. But just to clarify, we were told, we were told that the addition of our, our wonderful phase one was going to increase our enrollment, and we're being told the same thing this time through.
All the person Hersh?
Yes, I mean, those are sad numbers, but we also, remember, we do have some development coming in on the riverfront that hopefully revitalizes the city that people will want to move to. But also, I, I, hopefully, you know, the school board, when we had that liaison meeting, takes these numbers of students going elsewhere very seriously and try to figure out a way to encourage more than just 68 students coming here, because we have a really great school, and try to figure out a program or marketing or whatever to encourage other students from other communities to come here. We just can't keep growing to fill our schools. We have to try to keep the students that we have and try to encourage other people from surrounding communities that don't have the great resources we have in our schools to come to our schools. So I, hopefully, the school board is really trying to get other students from other local communities that don't have the opportunities like we do with our STEM programs and our fab lab and all the other cool things that we have here. So hopefully, that, that trend that you're saying is going down, hopefully it'll start going back up the other way. You don't think it's not?
No, not after 17 years downward. I don't think that that's going to, that isn't, I don't think that's going to reverse. They've looked at so many different aspects of why students enroll out. Tim touched on a couple of them, but I mean, they're, they're so varied and so wide that I don't know that you could develop any sort of a program that you're going to net all of those back in, even a small number of them. I don't, I just don't know that that's feasible. Whatever people have for their decisions for open enrolling out are their decisions for doing so. I don't think it's necessarily whether or not they, they live here, don't live here, any of that sort of thing.
So, well, hopefully, we can get together and have more conversations again with the school district. We were doing that for a while, and it feels like we're at a point where maybe we can entertain the idea of getting back together with them and, and, you know, engaging in a conversation. I had one last thing on my list, and then if there's any other questions that you want answered, you know, we can try to answer them tonight, or you can shoot me an email. And that relates to the action we took at the last meeting, where we, we decided that we're going to make the decision on the request on November 26. And after the, the next day after the meeting, we started looking at calendars, and that kind of falls during Thanksgiving week. And I know Jamin's going to be unavailable that week to be at that meeting. So I'd like the council to at least consider between now and the next meeting about possibly, you know, changing that date. And if you need more information to have it earlier, we'll be glad to provide it. If we can't provide it in a timely manner, we can certainly push it back. If you have all the information that you need, then I see no need to wait until November 26. But that's up to you guys. You guys took the action. So I'll, I'll leave that up to you on what you want to do. If you want to talk about rescheduling the date at the next meeting, we can. It's not really, it's not specific on the agenda, and you can have some time to think about. I don't know if we necessarily need to make that decision tonight. Does anybody else have any questions about any of what was presented either tonight or at the last meeting or prior to that? Or if you do, if you don't, you know, feel free to email. We'll try to answer them as best as we can. Dan's here tonight, if you have any questions for Forward. Sitting there, getting paid, wanting to talk, or just getting paid.
I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did you have anything briefly that you want to present? We still have a few more items.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Swidely, members of the council. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I did bring some additional information about the, the school enrollment and how we came up with the numbers that we did for that presentation. But I can submit that, just so you've got that to look over. But I don't want to take up any of your time if there aren't any specific questions.
This is assuming build-out, and that we're, we're going to be able to do this, and we're actually going to be able to accomplish this feat and get young families moving in, correct?
That's right.
And I'm, I'm just a little bit wary and suspect that these, these predictions are going to be coming true.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty confident. I mean, we've done some market studies, and if you look at the inventory that Stoughton has in terms of your single-family lots, you're, you're churning through that inventory pretty quickly. And we think that this, this particular single-family inventory is something that's, that's needed in the community, an opportunity or an option that doesn't exist right now. So we're pretty, pretty confident that, that people will be interested in these lots and in living in this neighborhood.
Any other questions for Dan? Otherwise, we'll go on to the next item. And the next item is.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, we discussed trying to get more public participation in this discussion. So what we did is we just put down a couple ideas, and I guess I would open it up to any questions or comments if you think that's sufficient, or if there's something else you'd like to see us do, or unless we're talking about sidewalks, I guess nobody's showing up here to let us know what's on their mind. I think you should talk to all those folks and see what they say about this. But any thoughts about option A or option B, or all the person Borisman?
I like option B. I think it gives people who, who don't have time one night that they could come and, and do a, do their, looking, looking at it and presentations and that kind of thing. So I think rather than, rather than having us make a decision independently from our constituents, I think that, I think that option B is better than option A.
All the person Riley?
Thank you, mayor. Is there any way for us to publicize this in some way that we have some level of confidence people will be aware of it? Something obviously inexpensive, but, I mean, obviously, all of us can speak to people and hope that they, you know, we get them here.
We've been posting the medias on our social media, and, you know, they're always on our website. And, you know, I think there was an article in the paper last week, and those are our usual methods, and maybe that's not sufficient.
Is there, do we know, do we keep track of how many hits we're getting on the social media? Is there a way for us to do that?
Do you know? We can find out.
There is.
I know we have a.
I mean, it depends on.
Four over 500 likes.
Cool, man.
I didn't see any unlikes. But yeah.
It's early.
We're, we're at about 550 people, so it's, it's been building. And we've been putting a lot of different variety of things on there, so hopefully people will continue to share.
Is, is, may I ask another, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just one more quickly. I think Jean can answer this. There was some discussion with respect to all the persons getting involved in so, you know, in social media sites. I know my neighborhood now has a Facebook group. Would it be inappropriate for me to go on that and just say, hey, we're going to have these meetings? Please show up and give us your thoughts if you're available, or is that cool?
That is, that is.
Perfectly fine.
You representing and getting into, though, you know, I think the best ways are to say there's these events happening, and more information is available on the, or see our packet. I mean, and see what's there. Go to the city website. But engaging in ongoing comments and things like that, that is, that is where I think.
Yeah. This would be just, these, these meetings are available. Here's what we're considering. Please show up if you have any interest in expressing your opinion. That's, that's all I'd be talking.
So that state, that Stoughton neighborhood group has 6,000 people.
Right.
And so it's a good place to post something and simply have it be a post and say, direct them where you want them to go.
Yep, yep.
That, that to me, I think is in keeping with the social media policy.
I'll just mention, I asked the mayor to authorize me to, to try and provide some better information to the council about how you all can engage in speech on non-city-sponsored social media sites and try and give you a better understanding of where that line is that, that you have to pay attention to. Is it, when might we be crossing the line into an open meeting law violation, and when, when would we not? So that's coming, but certainly what you described would, I have no concern that that would cross the line.
Good, thank you.
All the person Hersh?
I guess I would propose an option C, which would be that you would have a public hearing for people that can attend on the 24th that actually explains TIF, because I think this is what Jean was trying to get, is educating and trying to get some feedback and discussion. And then open it up, public comments for the rest of the, the other, you know, period. So if people come to that meeting on the 24th and they listen, and they actually, kind of, it takes people a while to like, understand it, synthesize it, and figure out where they actually stand. So I would love it if they then can come to the other, like, November meetings to actually say, okay, this is what I learned, and this is what I, I feel. But if you only have it at one, that day, you might not get a lot of comments or anything because they're, they're digesting the information. And if, if we only do B, you're not doing the education part of it, and I think that's really important. So I, I propose an option C.
Okay. All the person Reeves?
Well, and I just, I, I don't think a TIF 101 would draw anybody, including me. So I think I'd make it clear that it's about the proposed, that it's about the request for, you know, for, for money and TIF and all that, and make it relevant to the actual thing we're going to be talking about. So they understand.
I think the idea was to give kind of a layman's version of what Jamin presented to the finance and to the council to, like you said, be specific about this project. Maybe throw a little bit of TIF in, just so they understand.
Right.
That, what increment means and things like that. And the, what we're trying to do is come up with a way to do it without scheduling additional meetings for you guys, because I don't know about you guys, but I've had plenty lately and budget going on. There's still more to be had. So we're trying to also be sensitive to, to your time as well, because I know you want to attend and participate in the discussions. All the person Jensen?
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree with what Regina was saying. It, there needs to be a, I don't know how you put it. There needs to be an education process, so that people understand exactly what's going to happen. What's, what are, what's the good, the good points, what's the bad points? Make sure they understand before they, they are asked for an opinion. Too often, we have people who'll come in with an opinion, and, well, like tonight, you know, they're, they're, they're thinking that, you know, this was it. Well, it wasn't it. It, it, you know, they got what they wanted, that's fine. I have no problem with that. But we, we, we too often are not transparent enough, just as, as all the person Riley was saying. And I, and I, I think that we need to, along with that transparency, we need to be able to educate. And so I think that's very important, and I, I appreciate her point.
And I certainly can agree with that, and, but I would also say, you know, we've been trying to do a lot of educating on this for quite a while, and people just aren't participating. And somebody once told me, you got to wanna. And so far, I haven't really seen that many people that want to come to the meetings and be educated. Maybe some are following at home or on social media. I know there's people out in the community that read our packets and read our minutes, and they just don't really communicate what they see. So, you know, at some point, you know, we have to make a decision. If we wait around for communication, unless it's something that's really some close to home, like tonight, for whatever reason, they're not inspired to show up or send emails. And, so where do you draw the line, I guess is the question.
If I could offer like an amendment, I guess, to it, would be that you do the education portion of it, and you, and you see how many people are there. Well, if you don't have anybody show up, what do you do?
Yeah, I mean, we did that.
That kind of gives you an indication as to where the people are on it.
If you remember when we went through the comprehensive plan amendment, we started that on May 6, and we didn't make the decision until August 13. How many people showed up?
Not many.
Like, three.
Handful, you know.
You know, so, and we could probably name who the people were, and some of them may even be here tonight. So it, that's, that's a difficult thing. And like I said, I was trying to do this in a way that is sensitive to your time. And the question I would have is, we'll do the presentations, we have plenty of material. How much is enough and how much is overload for the average citizen if we do a presentation? Is it 10 minutes? Is it 20 minutes? Is it, you know, how much is enough to get people at least a general idea of what we're doing here?
Five minutes is all you need?
No.
I know.
Go ahead, Gina.
I think if you're going over something this complicated, I would say no more than 15 minutes. But it, and Jamin does a really good job if we have handouts. I, I, I still want to kind of promote the option C, but also, I think we haven't heard a lot of people with respect to TIF, because the people that were, you know, the, the majority of the, the community that was against the TIF that we did, used their, their voting power to get off the council members that voted for it. So they thought that they did their due diligence by voting for people that felt like them that would not vote for TIF again. Now granted, that's been a couple of election cycles. And so if it comes up into the press again that we're revisiting TIF, you might get people going, what? I thought we got all those people off that voted for TIF, and now there's a new crew that we now have to let them know how we feel. Just, you know, or maybe now they've changed their minds, too. So I don't think you can say that, you know, oh, it's not worth the time to educate our public. That's our job, to try to make sure that we're getting information out to our citizens of why we're making the decisions we're doing. And so I guess, I mean, and I don't think we're not adding any more meetings. We're adding maybe an, you know, half hour, 45 minutes to our already meeting on the 24th, and we're already going to be here on the other meetings, so we're not actually adding a thing.
So you propose that we do a presentation at all the meetings?
No, 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 on the 24th.
Okay.
And then let people kind of ruminate what they learned about, so they can come back on any of these other days or send us emails or whatever, you know, during the public comment period. If they don't show up, they might just send us emails. Like, we got tons of emails from this issue, you know, that we dealt with today. So I'm assuming that once the word gets out there, we will be getting emails.
All right. Jamin, did you have something?
Do we want to do the 24th, or do, do we want to shoot for the, the 22nd council meeting? Because the 24th is a pretty important budget meeting. It's the final one on the committee of the hall. I think we'll have a fair number of city staff here, and I, I just, I don't want to get bogged down in the conversation now people have to sit through that, because that might be a long night, anyway.
So we'll do the, the 22nd council meeting for the presentation?
I would suggest if you could, just to try and keep it to like five minutes, because the attention span is.
Five minutes isn't a, they can't.
I don't know that you can do it.
He just went over in five minutes. That, that makes poor Jamin have to talk very, very fast.
He talks fast enough already.
If he can.
I guess, what do you.
Does 10, 15 minutes, that's probably more, gives people a lot of time, though.
Well, I, I guess what are we looking for? Well, I guess, what are we looking for, for a presentation?
I would...
Because there's a lot there. I could talk about a lot. I mean, to do it justice, it's more than five minutes, I know that, but...
Well, Jean, this was your idea. What were your imageries?
High points.
Well, I didn't see the issues out there at all, and I just felt it was a sleeping giant. I think people want to understand that it's, a second request is out there, what's basically being asked for, and how it potentially may impact them. And then I say question answers, let people ask what they want to know. Off the top of my head, that's my thought.
All right. Did you have something to add, Matt?
Just a question about how the, so what I'm hearing is potentially that there would be a public hearing scheduled for the October 22 meeting, and then people would have the opportunity to comment during the public comment section of the meetings on November 12 and November 26. My question is for the, if that's the case, for the October 22 meeting, how do you want to give notice of that public hearing? Do you want to do anything different than the usual class one notice that says there's going to be a meeting at this time at this date to talk about this little thing? Do you want to give a class two notice, which means it's in the newspaper twice?
Which we couldn't do at this time.
Because it's too late for that, okay. Is that right? So you've got one shot at putting a notice in the newspaper, and I guess the question is, what would you like that notice to look like?
Big, bold letters.
I guess an article would be nice, if we could get the press, they don't have anybody from the press ever here again.
They're probably streaming. They watch it online.
Right. It'd be nice to have it, talk about, you know, TIF revisit at PPW, come, we want to, you know, get your ideas, your opinions, you know, something that gets people interested, that we're interested in learning what they want to know, what their ideas are and their pros and cons for it.
Okay.
I just have a concern about if we have a public hearing, if we do it in these chambers, that we may not have enough room for people who may want to attend. So I would suggest that we may want to have our council meeting in a different location, like maybe the firehouse?
We could, but it causes all sorts of issues for the IT.
Does it?
Yeah. The quality's not as good. It actually costs more money to put on the production, and the end product is just not...
So what about the public comment periods? Would they be at the firehouse?
Well, what we're suggesting is, is we would do it at the council meeting, is what I'm hearing. I mean...
Okay. If it's a terrible idea, I'm open for that.
You know, we have the same issue if we have it at EMS, too, that for whatever reason, I mean, this is hardwired here. So other than the screen here, the rest of it, it works fairly consistently compared to...
Can I follow up?
Sure.
And that is, to move this thing along, I would, I would present a motion to have the option A, along with option B, that we have the presentation, however, at the October 22nd council meeting, and that we do the public comment meetings, no matter where it is, on October 8th, 22...
At least 8th.
Not 8th.
It's tonight.
It's the 22nd, November 12th and November 26th.
And the 26th is the meeting that Jayman won't be available for, so we might want to revisit that, or you may decide that you may not even want to have that meeting.
Well, can I just say, possibly the 26th?
Yeah, that's fine.
That'll be my motion.
Second.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
A second? Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right. Jean's been waiting all night for this one. This one's coming from CACP.
This is R 159, 2019, resolution on climate emergency, approved by CACP, five to nothing on October 1st, 2019. I so move.
Second.
Second by?
Riley.
Riley?
Thank you.
Okay. All the person, Lagaki?
I'm going to defer to my colleague, who I love for putting this forward, Ben Hiley, around what he would like to say around this, and then I'd like to speak to the resolutions that let it be resolved at the end.
So I introduce this to CACP. I think it's a really important step for the council to take in terms of getting on the same page about the climate crisis being real and something that we need to think about in the background of every decision we make. I think that this document reflects that, and I think it's kind of a roadmap for moving forward by committing CACP to really look at this in depth. CACP, we discussed spinning out a new commission or something, but CACP hasn't had a huge workload, and it would just be one more meeting that a lot of people would have to get to, so we decided on that route. I wanted to make one correction. I think it's a, just a transcription error. In this amendment, the, or in this resolution, the line that says, whereas United States economy, that's missing some words. As we had it in CACP, it's, whereas the only potential solutions to this crisis demand disruptive structural changes to the United States economy. And that wording is in the CACP packet from last week.
So we'll get it. All right. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll shoot it back to Jean.
So we wanted to put in writing that we're hoping that this is going to be reflected in all of our decisions, and that moved us to the point of, how does this get organized? And so it just made sense for it to sit into CACP for now, but we see building alliances with places like Reno, Wisconsin, to possibly invite sustainable Stoughton to these particular meetings. We're not sure what that's going to look, but we felt that it's really important, one, to make a statement, and two, to at least have a place where we organizationally are trying to let this sit. And this is our first attempt at that.
Thank you. All the person, Borzma?
With respect, I will be voting against these for two sound Sid in minority reasons. These kinds of resolutions are a poor precedent, I think, for our city council, and don't do any good. And I object to the verbiage of climate emergency. Not everybody agrees with that. I don't know that we have one, and the efforts to address this as a council are, in my estimation, futile and unnecessary, so I will be voting against.
Any other questions or comments? So one of the things we've been doing is we've been working with Slipstream, you might recall the grant that we approved where we're partnering with other municipalities. We're starting to get the information from the walkthroughs that we talked about, and Jill's been kind of gathering the data now that she's going to those meetings as well as myself and Corey Neely. So Jill's offered to help support your efforts, and I don't know to what extent she's offering, and what extent, you know, you would accept her offer, but we had an initial discussion anyway, so we can at least get you some data to work with. Does that sound reasonable?
That'd be great.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Sid, I heard your second point, but the language you objected to, could you just repeat it? I could have...
I don't think that everybody here, including me, necessarily thinks of the climate emergency.
But did you say there was a particular language you objected to?
I just, I just think that a resolution like this is, you know, just kind of unnecessary for our council to engage in. And other, I know other municipalities are doing it, and, you know, if we have resolutions that, I, my verbiage was fetal, unnecessary and fetal. I mean, it doesn't do any good, I don't think, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on the resolution is corrected? Here and all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
And that carries. Okay. We're on R 160 of 2019, and this one's been through utilities, personnel, and finance. AJ's been waiting patiently. How you doing?
Excellent.
Yeah?
Ready to roll.
Put you to sleep?
Nope. I'm all caught up on social media, though.
All right. Who wants to start this one? And then, we do have the opportunity to go into closed session if we need to. I don't know if we will need to or not. Obviously, the city attorney can let us know if we cross whatever line there is on these personnel issues. But otherwise, you can go ahead with the, this is coming, who wants to introduce it, which committee, I guess I should start with?
I'll take it. I had it last.
You'll take it? You had it last.
Yep. So resolution R 160, 2019, authorizing and directing proper city official to approve the Stoughton Utilities Employee Compensation Analysis for 2020. So moved?
Second.
Second by all the person, Haley. Go ahead, Brett.
All right. So you can see there were a number of unanimous votes, including Finance Committee on this one. I am going to let...
Okay, I'm going to actually ask Jill to start, so she can explain to you the PSC's standing, and then from there, we'll go into the Springstead study and how that applies.
And since I missed the opportunity to really highlight Public Power Week, I'm going to highlight Public Power Week. And it's a municipal utility that's public power. And I think in many ways, it really underscores the wise choices that our forefathers and every council since then has been executing, to actually have a municipal utility. We're one of 81 in the state of Wisconsin. But it's a wonderful opportunity, really, to provide reliable service to your customers, but also to not have investor owns. And there's no issues with investor owns whatsoever. The only thing is, it does increase rates. PSC actually regulates so that 5% is the rate of return allowed for a municipal, whereas on an investor own, it's 12%. So that inherently carries over to the rates themselves. And so that's one thing that's great about, and many things that are great about public power. One other great thing is that we really know our customers. We know everybody here, we know our committee, and it's a small group that we're able to serve. So that then pushes me into, it's also National Customer Service Week, which I also want to say really underscores the work that all of our staff does. So with that, I wanted to really highlight a few things to start with, is Stoughton Utilities, we basically provide a commodity. We provide water, sewer, and electric, and our customers then pay rates to provide those services. And they also pay rates to make those services very reliable. Whereas the city and the services that, many of the city services, those are actually levy tax dollars that actually pay for those services. So anything that we're talking about this evening actually has no impact on the city's budget, it's the utility's budget that it would have impact on. So we're regulated by the Public Service Commission, and that really regulates electric and water. And what that does ultimately is, they've got a mission here. The PSC's mission is to oversee and facilitate the efficient and fair provision of quality utility services in Wisconsin. They ultimately approve any kind of rate changes, so if we request a rate change, they approve that. If we go to build any large infrastructure investments, they need to approve that as well, because ultimately, that has an impact on rates, and it also has an impact on reliability. So they really underscore that they want to make sure that basically there's good use of customers' dollars, to make sure that they are getting what they're paying for, and then it's reliable for really the current customers, but out into the future. So with that, basically, we're already working on electric rate case that Jayman was working on, and recognize that. We want to always try to stay as close to that rate of return as possible. Ultimately, that's important to the reliability of the utility, and it really makes the utilities, from a business standpoint, say, we're at a point where if, say, something were to happen, we would have those cash reserves available to us to ensure that reliability. So Jayman was working on the electric rate case. We've been working with the city as far as the capital improvements projects, and really to work on those together. So if we're going to do a street project, do we have any utility needs at the same time? As we started to analyze through that, recognized that there's a lot more capital improvement projects than we had typically years past. So from a typical budget standpoint, from water or wastewater, we might have been spending 750,000 on capital improvements. We're now looking at 1.2 on one year, 1.8, but more in the millions that we hadn't been doing in the past. So Jayman, of course, recognized this, and says, okay, we need to move forward with the rate case to make sure, again, that work that we're doing on the CIP is ensuring that reliability. I would say that as we look at our infrastructure on water and wastewater in particular, the large infrastructure, so the plant, the water, the wells, and the towers are in great condition. It's our distribution system, or it's our collection system that needs additional help to ensure reliability, which these CIP projects help do. So as he was working through the rate cases, we started to look through all the aspects of that, and recognized that wages haven't been adjusted, and there's been no market analysis of the utilities' wages since 2016. And I must admit, that is extremely concerning to me. A couple reasons why is, one, we are the highest turnover, we're the least, you know, we lose staff more than any other department. And a lot of that has to do with our linemen. As we go through, they're very highly sought after. They will come here, they will get trained, and then they'll move on to other opportunities that they have. And opportunity-wise, from a utility standpoint, there's significant opportunities. We've got three investor-owned utilities, and we've got nine municipal utilities within 30 miles of Stoughton. So that's a lot of competition that we have inherently for our staff. And as we look to train them, then they have the potential to move on to other opportunities. The other thing that I want to really highlight as we kind of go through this is, over the years, the utility has been able to create efficiencies. In 1991, we actually had 28 staff. We now today have 24. We have four pending retirements in the next, well, depends on, probably one to four years or so is what we anticipate right now. With succession planning and looking at that, we believe that we may be able to be more efficient, and we're not sure that 100% of those will be replaced. So we're looking to try to, again, continue to be very efficient in how we're operating. The piece I keep getting away from here is back to the PSC. When the PSC looks at our rate cases, when we go forward and request these rates, they don't look at specifically, you know, does that position have that required wage? What they look at is, when you asked for your last rate case, you were paying X for wages, and now today, you're looking to pay X. And that percentage increase is what they really look at very closely. So as we continue to not do market analysis, that percentage continues to increase, and the potential then for us not to be able to cover those rates, or those costs within our rates becomes greater and greater, because they will deny if that percentage gets to be too far apart moving forward. So that's why we looked at, basically involved, once Jayman and I got kind of talking about the rate cases and looking at all that, sat down with the mayor, Jayman, and AJ, and started to look at, okay, what can we do to better support our staff, to make sure we don't have the turnover, that we're able to retain those good people, and also, if, you know, as we have these retirements, how are we able to attract new employees to come to Stoughton Utilities?
So with that being said, when I became involved, what we did is looked at the Springstead study to make sure that the integrity of that study was still in place. So we reviewed each of the position descriptions, looked at the actual grade levels, and the grade levels were correct. So the piece that we need to do here is the actual rightsizing, and what we're asking to do at this point is rightsize the utilities' employees while we're able to capture that opportunity through the PSC, and be able to cover that at this time. Unfortunately, with the city, we're not able to do that for every employee, but as you know, we are chipping away at that. And since we do have the opportunity here, the retaining of employees is so important. You guys have seen the turnover and what has occurred within utilities, and as we talked about, those linemen, the water workers, there are special skill sets that are down there, and it's difficult for us to retain that staff, as well as to attract them in the event that somebody does leave because of the rates that we're paying. So what we've done then is looked at each and every employee, looked at the rightsizing module that you approved last year, and we placed each of those employees at the appropriate step within the grade level that was established by Springstead. So what we're doing is actually what we've been trying to accomplish for the city, for all staff, we would be doing ahead of time with utilities, because we do have this opportunity.
All the person, Borzma?
So I, in part of personnel, we discussed this... I, in part of personnel, we discussed this last night. And I think it's a good idea. And for that reason, I moved to approve R 160, 2019.
Second.
I think we already had a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, it's okay. What's that?
Double second.
That's all right. That's at least four votes. Anything else, Sid?
No, I just think it makes sense and we talked about this at length. And I think all of us, I think we voted on it, actually.
We did unanimously.
Unanimously. At Personnel, so apologize. I didn't hear the motion.
That's okay.
This was also voted on, just real quick, by the Utilities Committee as well and went through there unanimously.
And I think we can do it without going into close, that's my thought.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Everybody's tired. All right. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number 14 is coming, well, this one went through Personnel and Finance. Do you want to do this one as well? All the person Schumacher.
R 157, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to approve the updated position description, grade level and pay rate for the city treasurer. I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Riley. All the person Schumacher.
This had gone through Personnel and Finance, both with unanimous decisions. And then I'll defer the specifics over to AJ.
Background on this one is, as you all know, we've had a high level of turnover in our finance department, specifically with our finance director. Thank goodness we have stability now with Jamin here. Thank you. But with that occurring, we have an employee within the department who has taken on more and more responsibilities. And with Ryan coming in, he recognized that this employee's been consistently functioning at a much higher level than a deputy treasurer, actually at the city treasurer level. So what this resolution is doing is we've already gone through the Springstead correction and we've gone through the process of looking at the position analysis questionnaire. The position's been regraded as it states on the resolution, moving from a nine to a 10. And we would be increasing her compensation to 2981, which would then be no increase on 1-1 because we're rightsizing at this time. So this is one of those employees that we were talking about that we were chipping away at. This is one that we would be able to check that box, has been corrected and rightsized.
All the person Hirsch.
Can you just clarify, is this like the deputy treasurer moving up to a city treasurer then position? Because it was, the way it was, I was confused that we had a city treasurer and a deputy treasurer and they were both moving up. But it's just.
No.
The deputy is moving up to a city.
The deputy treasurer is moving into the city treasurer's position. We will no longer have a deputy treasurer.
Okay. That's what I was.
Elimination.
Yeah, I was a little confused by that. Okay, thank you very much.
No backfilling, no other hiring.
All right. Thank you.
We'll more than likely label Ryan as the deputy treasurer because you still need that position for signatory purposes, but it doesn't change anything with the job descriptions or anything, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Last but not least, R 158, 2019. And this one went through Personnel and Finance. All the person Schumacher is getting all the glory for us.
R 158, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to approve the updated position description, grade level and pay rate for the Information Technology Director. I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. All the person Schumacher.
This one also went through Personnel and Finance Committees, both with unanimous decisions. And again, I'll defer the specifics to AJ.
For those of you that were on the council at the time that we developed and approved the Information Technologies Director position, you are aware that we did our best job to write that position description, not fully knowing what the duties would be of that position, but did our best guess at the time. We had said that we would get back together in one to two years. It is at the two-year mark now. So we did go back through and ran the position analysis questionnaire. I sent that off to Springstead for the scoring. It did move the position from a 14 to a 17 and it moves the pay from 3986 to 48,000. Just a caveat, for those of you that are familiar with IT positions, this falls just below six figures. Typically, in the private sector, those positions are in the six figures. And this would bring the position into line for the duties as well as the compensation. So this is another box that we can check that would be rightsized. Same thing with no comp, increase on 1-1 of 20, since we're doing it now.
All the person Hirsch.
I have nothing against this position. I was just out of curiosity and so we have AJ here tonight. How many more staff need to be rightsized, if you know off the top of your head?
Regina, that's a really tough question.
Many.
Okay. I just didn't know.
And you're not talking large dollar amounts. Because if you can remember, when you did the increases the last two years, what we did is we gave just a basic increase to the employee. We did not update the compensation matrix. Therefore, those employees fell off the staff system because of those increases going through and not affecting the matrix. So to rightsize the employees, I would say there's probably 50% of the employees that need to be rightsized. But you're not talking with every employee hundreds and thousands of dollars. Some of them are on the lower end. So leadership's meeting tomorrow to look at the rightsizing as a whole, as well as our requests that we're bringing forward for, that we had, are each bringing forward in regards to our needs for our departments.
Okay. Thank you. It's just good to see that we're getting some people. I was just hoping that.
We're trying.
We're chipping more off.
We're trying to get as many as we can, but we also want to make sure it's sustainable. The last thing we want to do is overextend ourselves and then have to lay people off. And they're having those conversations in other communities. So we're trying to do what we can but be disciplined enough to realize that we have to, you know, be able to sustain these positions and the pay that goes with them because we're not blessed with having an overabundance of staff to begin with. And if we start, you know, trying to do it all at once in the city side, it's not going to happen. And it's really unfortunate because the state really limits what we can do in order to retain our people. And I'd like to think that we're capable of making them decisions and our community would support our decisions if the state would just let us do our job. Any other questions or comments on this one? And I'll be fighting at the Capitol again in November. Here and none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. I heard all the person Riley, was there a second?
It was Borzma.
Oh, it was Borzma, I'm sorry. And who was the second? Henson?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 10 o'clock, we need it.